I see Luke and I see Valerie. Okay, we're all here. All right, perfect. And I heard just, I just heard Mr. Kamali. All right. So, uh, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first session of the legislative year. All right, so we are gonna go to our, our protocol. So, um, we're gonna do a call to order. Okay, so Jared's office.
Here.
Luc Chesek?
Here.
Gater Woodall?
I'm here.
Jimmy Tarlo?
Yeah.
And I'm here as mayor. All right, and do me a favor. If you're not speaking, can you guys please shut your mics out? Um, and that goes for everybody, please, so that way we don't get a lot of sound back. And right now with my mic will go open and then Vice Mayor Mike will go open. Those should be the only two mics that should be open at this point. All right, so, uh, thank you, guys. So we have a full quorum. Um, item number two will be review of the agenda. The mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Vice Mayor, can you please go ahead and read the agenda? Once the Vice Mayor reads the agenda, um, members of council and myself will either add or delete items on the agenda. Um, or we will request, uh, to add in, in, you know, the, and the rest of us, depending who it is, like, we will vote, um, to add an item. So Jared, the floor is yours.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight's the agenda for work session, mayor city council, city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, virtual work session, Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, some, you know, uh, items for discussion, number one, call to order. Number two, review of the agenda, the mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, presentation and discussion on the Perry Street and 31st Street intersection concept plan, 25 minutes, the mayor and council, excuse me, sorry, or receive an update from the consultants, the Low Impact Design Center. Number four, presentation and discussion with, on the staff draft, West Hyattsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan and Proposed Sectional Map Amendment, 25 minutes. The mayor and council will receive a presentation from Mr. Brandon Rowe, Project Manager, Community Planning Division, MNCPPC. Number five, update and discussion on the status of the Finance Department. The mayor and council will receive an update from Ron Wilson, the city's finance consultant. Number six, update discussion on 3200 Royal Island Project. The mayor and council will receive an update from Mr. Ron Hopkins, Director of Economic Development, and Ms. Alma Farafino, Director of Code Compliance. Number seven, uh, discussion appointment to Police Advisory Board, 15 minutes. The mayor and council have a discussion on the appointment to the Police Advisory Board. Number eight, discussion on the front bathroom. The mayor and council will have a discussion on the front bathroom. Number nine, ARPA discussion update. Uh, the 20 minutes, the mayor and councils discussed the status of projects and reallocation of funds. Number 10, discussion on timeline, have in-person council meetings. 15 minutes, the mayor and council have a discussion on the timeline, have in-person council meetings. Number 11, presentation of minutes. The city clerk will present the September 6, 2022 legislative meeting minutes to the mayor and council, and number 12, adjournment.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Um, now I'm gonna open the floor to Mayor, uh, to myself and Council. Um, is there anything in the agenda that you guys have added that you wish to delete? I'm gonna go by order. Uh, Council, let me know if there's anything you need to delete first. Nothing you wish to delete? Um, I do see, um, I see, okay, I see the three of you guys, you're fine. Jimmy, is this any deletion or is addition?
Addition.
All right, hold on. You'll be first on the next round. Okay, so there's nothing to delete. All right, moving on to addition. Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Just a short point, I, I sent something to the council, uh, that the, there's a announcement that there's gonna be a liquor, uh, board, uh, commission meeting next Tuesday, uh, virtually about a liquor permit for, uh, application for a liquor permit for 3409 Perry Street. Uh, I think it's called Art and Soulful. And while, uh, I, you know, maybe a great thing for the city, I, I think we should before they actually get to the, uh, permit, I'm just, uh, that we should actually ask it to be delayed. So I think we have to decide to say that at the meeting next Tuesday. I know we have a long agenda, but this is the only meeting we have before our next, uh, meeting. And I'm not saying we oppose it, just that we ask them to delay until they meet with the city. That, anyway, that's why I'm putting the agenda.
Okay, and to be clear, even if we ask them to delay, that guarantees nothing, because we have nothing to do with the liquor licenses. I just wanted to clarify that. Because, um, we, we don't. Okay, so Council, you heard the addition to the agenda. Please, um, let me know how you feel. Um, so Jimmy said, and Melissa, what you want us to add to the agenda, so Melissa, go add it. What, what is this?
Uh, uh, taking a position, uh, at the liquor control, liquor, liquor control commission to, uh, to delay the, ask that they delay the grantee of a liquor license to 3409 Perry Street.
Um, and, um, we could do that, Jimmy, but remember, this is not a voting meeting, so it's in a vice room.
So, uh, what do you suggest, Mayor? Because, you know, if we don't do anything, uh,
So, what I'm thinking, are you requesting a letter from mayor and council to delay? Is, is that what you're asking?
Just that we, that we go, so I can go and just say that we'd ask that to be delayed until after they meet with the city. I mean, if there's a consensus, then we don't have to make it official.
Okay, so, uh, uh, Council, I need to hear you out. It's in addition to the agenda. I'm not sure if you guys 100% clear was being asked, uh, but if you guys, uh, you'll put it in one sentence and we go open it for discussion. Um, who, um, I'm gonna go with War One. Luke, if your mic is open?
Yeah, I'm okay with adding it to the agenda and we can talk about how we can do it. I think we get a, a, a letter or, or support for Jimmy to the delay and we have consensus on it. Um, you know, that could work. We can talk more about it, just adding it to the agenda.
Okay, Jared?
I concur with that as well.
Valerie?
I agree, we can add it to the agenda.
Okay, so Jimmy, um, what exactly do you want, uh, Melissa to add to the agenda? Uh, so she could literally write it down in the agenda.
Discussion on, uh, liquor control, uh, liquor control mission meeting on September 27th.
Do you have the address of the location, your, your, um?
40, 3409 Perry Street.
Okay. 3409. Thank you, Melissa. Council, while Melissa's writing this down, is there anything else you need to add or delete from the agenda? We already asked for add, anything else to, anything else to add?
No, I'm good.
Thank you, Valerie. Jared?
No.
Luke? Luke?
Nope.
And Jimmy, this the only one?
Yeah.
Okay, is that correct? 349 Perry Street?
Yes.
All right, well, um, discussion on the liquor, okay, that, that should be sufficient. And the only reason why I need to know specifically what it is, so that way for record agenda keeping, because we're approving and voting on this agenda. All right, um, so, we, uh, unanimously decided to add this item to the agenda, um, and it's gonna be the last item on, on the agenda for tonight. All right, perfect. Um, and moving on to item number three. A presentation and discussion on Perry Street and 31st Street intersection concept plan. The mayor and council will receive an update from the consultants of LID Center. Um, I think I decided LID right here. Okay, so LID, um, the floor is yours. Neil?
If, if you're talking, you're muted.
Yeah, I have to let my dog get on, sorry about that.
It's all right, the floor is yours, Neil.
Okay, so just to catch everybody up, um, there's a memo that I've contributed to you. Um, just to give you a summary of it. Uh, the district, uh, first owns Eastern Avenue up to the back of the sidewalk, because where the prop, the dividing line of the district is on Eastern, um, and because we will have to do some construction. So originally, we were tasked with just, um, doing a traffic control island um, and putting some buyer retention in to help with that intersection of Perry and 31st Street. And then, uh, Karush asked us to look at, uh, the closure and conversion and the paving of, um, Perry Street from 31st up to Eastern Avenue. So because we're working in the district, um, they have a process, it's all planning, design, and review meetings in which, uh, projects in the DC right away, you could ask for a review from the different agency, from the Office of Planning, from the, um, uh, public space permits, uh, from the, uh, office for the tree, tree conservation, uh, and planting group. Um, and they're all invited to attend this meeting. Um, when we applied for it, the planner Evelyn Israel, who runs the meetings, uh, what she was, she, when we started discussing and putting a curb or closing off Perry Street, um, she said we really need to go talk to the fire marshal about, um, closing that and what the issues, if they're gonna have issues, she thought that would be a paramount thing. And, um, he was at the meeting, he reviewed the plans, and he was pretty adamant about not closing Perry Street. Um, because if they're the first response there that they have to go to, um, they can't get through there, there's a hydrant that they use um, on Eastern right there. Um, so he was very much against, uh, closing off Perry Street. Uh, someone from the Office of Planning offered a, um, suggestion of using, um, kind of grass block, um, access road for emergency vehicles. I don't know if you have ever seen one, but, um, they're right around the Queens Chapel and, uh, where it hits 410. There are some places where they've been installed, so if they have to get, um, an emergency vehicle back through there, but he was not very happy about that. Um, because if it's at night and they're in a big hurry, um, they have to locate where they would drive through. And that lane has to be 20 foot wide. That would essentially have to run through where Perry Street is now, which is 27 feet wide. So, um, the bottom line is, um, if you move, if you wanna do something with closing that road, you know, even putting a standard section in a driveway for emergency vehicles down there and you pave it, um, I think you're gonna get a lot of resistance um, from the district, particularly out of the fire marshal. Um, plus, if, I think you're gonna probably need some more drainage inlets along Eastern Avenue, which will be pretty expensive. Um, so that's kind of where you are on this project. So the next step, if you wanna pursue it, you would start developing design drawings and ask for another planning design review meeting, that they'll do it at 10%. And then that will start to, um, elicit these comments. And, um, they don't really review it until you send in the permit drawings. So, um, we haven't got, uh, the fire marshal on Prince George's County side that, you know, just maintain the, you know, same thing, access to the structures, um, which would have to probably be a fire lane like that. Um, and, um, so that's just the basic um, facts. If you wanna discuss those alternatives or want some more detail. But I, I think my opinion that would be very difficult um, to, um, very difficult to close that street off because of the issues with the.
We can't hear you, Neil. If you speak a little louder.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. It'd be very difficult to do that because of the transportation, D dot and the EMS issues in the district.
Thank you, uh, Neil. Um, Council, do you guys wanna start a question, this part of it? Um, do you have any questions for Neil on this part? Or do you guys want him to go through the whole thing?
Um, Valerie? Yeah, I guess one question, so I'm sorry, so this, um, um, so basically, the DC is basically saying, don't close Perry Street. Um, and the design pictures that we saw after that, there were two attachments after this letter. Are those, are those related or?
Wife just got, um, dogs and attacker.
Um, so, because there's two of them, I didn't know.
Concept what, that we had. Um, about, you know, enhancing the green space and putting the islands in. Um, that was done whenever last January, or I can't remember the exact date. And the other, um, drawing is of the survey, I believe, of the, of the site.
So Valerie, to clarify, so yeah, this are not, this, this do not show the Perry Street closed?
No.
Once originally we're done?
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, Council, do you have any questions to Neil regarding, um, Perry Street, uh, the part that he just presented regarding Perry Street not being able to be closed at this point, based on the fire marshal's feedback? So, okay, if you do, um, so Neil, we're gonna work on the first part of it, and then we'll go into the, the second one, because, you know, it's a lot to cover. All right, so, uh, since I was in War Two, I'm gonna go with Jared, and then we're gonna go to War One. Jared?
Yeah, Neil, um, I guess just a just a question for you, um, you know, there, the streets somewhat closed off already because of the bollards? Like, what was the, I guess, what was the fire marshal's feedback?
Well, there, there's structures on, structures on Perry Street, and plus there's a hydrant up there that they tie into. Plus, they want to, to the hydrant probably on 31st Street, in case they have to chain them together if there's a major fire there.
Okay.
So, in the concept that we drew with the island, we had that as a mountable curb with a fire, uh, with, with a, probably a articulated concrete block surface that lets vegetation go through. So they could, um, uh, drive over the top of the curb with a big truck.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, no, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you for that clarity. Because I, I was confused until, um, but that, that does make sense with, um, being able to, there's something blocking, but there's still a way to mount it in a emergency scenario, so.
I mean, right now, like, there's people running over the bollards.
Melissa, can you show them up in front so that when the questions are, are asked, um, they able to kind of guide it through it? It's a little bit easier to, to visualize it. So move on to the next screen. All right, Jimmy, you're next. And follow by look.
Yeah, so Neil, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the map. I don't know if it's up on the screen or not. But, uh, if 30, uh, if we just, if it's blocked off the west side of 31st Street on Perry, uh, that's at DC. So what would be the?
Because that, 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 you're taking the water from DC and you would have to do some construction in the district, which would um, which would trigger.
Say that again?
You just can't leave Perry Street open and just shut it off like 10 feet into Mount Rainier.
So Jimmy, remember, like, the sidewalk part and a little bit inside of the part of that, you see?
I'm talking about going all the way into Perry Street where, uh, 31st Street, you know, which is way down from, I'm, I'm sure there's a good reason, but where Perry Street, uh, and just saying no outlet. In other words, you know, right on the corner, 31st and Perry. I'm, I'm sure there's a good reason, I just can't, I'm looking at the map.
So you're talking about removing Perry Street from 31st to Eastern?
Yes.
Um, because you're gonna be taking, stopping drainage off of the road, um, like if you started at 10 feet back and plus, um, you know, what happens if somebody turns into that road?
It's a no outlet.
It's a dead, it would be a dead end.
Correct.
So they'd be stuck and they'd have to go into reverse.
They couldn't take a U-turn or, you know?
No, it's only 30 feet wide, 27 feet wide.
Okay.
They'd have to back out into the.
Okay, Luke, the floor is yours.
Thanks. Um, I know you mentioned one of the things that kind of got my ears popping was that you might have to do more inlets, which could be very expensive. When you say very expensive, does that mean like millions of dollars?
Uh, maybe over 100 grand, because you have to saw cut Eastern Avenue, uh, put a new manhole into the middle of Eastern Avenue and put an inlet, um, across, uh, right, right at Eastern, probably where Perry is. I'm, I'm just speculating, but based on the inlet spacing and the fact that water runs down that road.
Right. And, and then with that storm drain, does that storm drain system connect into our storm drain system that runs through?
No, they have a system that goes right down the middle of Eastern Avenue.
Okay, okay.
So they're, they're capturing all their water off of Eastern Avenue.
Okay, and then, and I apologize if this question got asked, how long, going through all this process with DC? I mean, how long? Best guess or conservative estimate? I mean, at the end of the day, they could still say no and we're screwed, but going through the process just to get to a yes or no?
I think that they will throw a traffic study at you to see what the effects of that closure is. I mean, you know, it's, you know, it's a thing, it's still gotta go through the process.
Yeah.
I would speculate there's some kind of traffic study involved. Um, it's stills gonna have to get worked out with the fire marshal. Um, I'm, I mean, you could probably go in there just put a typical street plan, street section across Perry Street and the Eastern Avenue, um, have a 20-foot wide kind of driveway that would go into, um, go, go down the street, probably parallel to the sidewalk. Um, uh, you know, it would be like a block surface, but that lets vegetation kind of grow through it. Um, and, um, and you would have to get him to agree that that is what they would like to do, or the way they wanna do it. But they're very, you know, it's a life safety thing, so they're, they're on very conservative about what they're.
Yeah. But that, that length of time, that process, to even get to like a, an up or down from them, are we talking a year, 18 months?
I would say it could be done within a year.
Okay.
So, I think the thing is, if they refer it to, um, if, if you, it, it probably will get referred to, you know, the Advisory Neighborhood Commission. Uh, they'd have to look at the master plan. There's, it's, it just opens worms, can it be done? Um, but you're rolling the dice a little bit.
So that's, that's helpful to know. I think that, you know, from my perspective, just to share with the rest of mayor and council, two things cross my mind. One is we got grant money. It wouldn't necessarily cover the additional 100,000 or more, and then two is the time lag and what that would do as far as when ARPA money could be spent. I think we could maybe still make it, but, you know, just two risks that get added to the, the plate. So that's all I have. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you, Luke.
I don't wanna be a killjoy, um, because I know, and the people on the planning probably were, were kind of confused about.
Neil, we can't hear you.
Well, someone else is on the line, let me communicate. So, um, you know, the two or three people from planning that were there said it was, you know, could be doable from their perspective, and they kind of liked the idea of, you know, having bicycle access only down the street and everything. Um, but, you know, they were, and, um, and they were concerned that it would go up to the next intersection, and Karush made a great point. You know, it's, it's, it's a shortcut that people use to get down to the, the circle. Um, it goes up and through there. So, um, I, I just think that you could have some more meetings with them, which would take, you know, another month or so to get the right people in the group and say, we wanna proceed. And then, um, I would be, you won't till, till you make the, submit all, you won't know things about like the traffic study and stuff like that will pop up.
So, thank you, Neil. I, I think that, um, I'm gonna make my comment, and then I see Brian Neller did put a comment in the chat box, and then we're gonna figure out like if residents wanna make a comment. Uh, so two things, I feel like we need to separate the two projects. The Green, Green Street, and if we wanna close Perry separately, so that way one doesn't hold the other one. As we advance on, you know, on, on the Green one, um, sorry, guys. You okay, honey? Get some water. Um, so as we advance on the intersection for Perry and 31st, the, 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 the second part of this presentation. And then if we have any other questions, so if we wanna get involved with this, after we also have a, a meeting with the residents, then we could pursue that differently, so that we're not holding up like the grant money for the, the second part of this project. then we could pursue that differently so that we're not holding up like the grant money for the the second part of this project, um the the second part of the presentation on hold. Um, because what I'm imagining here, like even if we put bumps out or like, you know, water, you know, rain gardens or something along those lines to be able to ease up some of um some of, how do you call it, um, some of the concerns when it comes to like stormwater management? Um, yeah, usually when the fire marshal, especially both uh county and and DC's are not in favor, it's gonna be a very hard hill to climb. But I definitely wouldn't want that to stop the other part of like, you know, the Perry um and Thirty First Street project that we're working on. So, um, council, think about what is it that we need to do and we could always bring that part um to a next work session just on that specific part as we also like try to schedule meetings um with the neighbors on Perry and Thirty First. Um, hopefully before this weather starts changing cuz it's already getting darker and colder at night. So, um, I would say start looking at the calendars to figure out when we could hold some meeting with the neighbors on Perry and Thirty First to be able to put this information in front of in front of them as as well. And I'm gonna read Brian's comments, um, Brian Nettler. Um, be aware that folks on Thirty Eight Block of Thirty Street use the Perry access to their block and you have three homes that have access off the alley. So they access via Perry. We went through these arguments years ago. This folks who will be impacted have hopefully given input. The bollards were made removal for fire engines and snowplows and the blisters. And it should have been a gated instead of bollards, but it wasn't on the console. Oops, sorry. It wasn't at the console at that time. So I guess there's food for thought, like potentially a gate and to also think about snow removal, um, if that area is completely closed, how's that gonna be managed?
Yeah, um, I don't, let me see if I can, you want me to bring that drawing up real quick of the concept?
Go ahead, Neil.
Do you want, Karush, you want, I'm sorry, do you want me to bring that, the plan setup? Do you look on screen?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Bring the island up the concept. If you can share a screen with me, I can do that.
That'll be Melissa. Melissa, can you give him a sharing, um, screen sharing power, please?
That's why I just that I made him host.
I thought, yeah.
Can you see what's going on now? Can you see my screen?
No.
Um, let's see, share a screen. Uh, here we go. Okay, so here was the concept that we had prepared. Just to look real quick. So there's crosswalks, one, two crosswalks. Um, small bio retention cell, I think, uh, into here. And um here would be, this would be vegetated. Here would be uh the fire access. So if they had to come through, they could go up on the curb and just go straight through down this way, or they could make a right turn, uh, go this way, or they could make a, you know, they'd have to go against traffic, but they'd cross over and and still be able to go through this way in an emergency. So the island would be here, so we'd make people make movement if they, you know, right turn only and then go back around the alley. Or, um, you know, that would be the option and they can't make a right into Thirty First.
Okay. Thank you, Neil. I'm gonna open up to the community right now. So if you have a comment you would like to make on this this section of it, um. Put your information on the chat and we'll call upon you. Uh, name, last name, block number and street. So if you live on the Thirty Eight Hundred Block of Thirty Street, that's, you know, if even if you live in Thirty Eight O One, it'll be Thirty Hundred Block of Thirty Street. I don't see anyone. I mean, we'll continue on and then we'll come back. Anything on Facebook, uh, Jared? All right, so I have um, Ms. Oh, Ms. Flynn. Uh, Ms. Flynn, uh, the floor is yours.
Sorry, I'm on my phone. Sorry, I'm on my phone. It took me a minute to to get all the things. Um, I do live on the Thirty Eight Hundred Block of Thirty Thirty First Street and um when we when we first met quite a while ago, there was some concern about the new construction that uh will one day take place on uh Bird Island and Eastern and how the access would work uh for for them, for the construction and then for the eventual building.
Kamali, do you have an answer for that one?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was on you. No, not yet, but I I believe that Jimmy mentioned this one uh last time and uh we made it clear to IGF group not to use that alley. And uh, I don't think they're planning to use the alley and, you know, during the construction.
Thank you. Good news, good news for those of us on on that back in here and it's also good news in terms of whether or not we might be able to block Perry. Uh, that's my question for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. All right, so um anybody else for the community? Right? So, uh, Neil, um.
Hello? Hi.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
I could hear you. Who is this?
This is uh, I'm on the uh Thirty First Street, uh, Mount Rainier.
Have your, can I have your name and last name and um house and block number, please?
Uh, Aaron.
Okay, you're you're cutting off her Erin.
Yeah, and Tyler.
Okay, go ahead, Erin.
Okay, so, well, I'm, uh, so far from what I've um I've heard of, so Perry Street coming from going into Eastern Avenue, are we saying that's gonna be uh blocked off or is is there a permanency on that or did I miss something?
We were looking to see if it was gonna be blocked off, um, but Neil just explained to us that the fire, the the fire marshals from DC and Prince George's County are not in a, are basically saying it shouldn't. So uh we're kind of right right there at this point, so no decision has been made. But um we will have to like brainstorm as council and figure out what steps we wanna take, whether, you know, we wanna get more information or not um after this. So no decision has has been made, but at this point, our the consultant from LID Neil told us like what are the challenges that are gonna be faced if that street happens to be closed. So, no decision.
Well, I I can.
It's very hard to hear you. You're cutting off.
Um, how about?
No.
Um, I'm trying to feel. How about now?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, maybe.
I I think, I think you said that you agree with the fire marshal decision. If um, am I correct?
Well, yeah. They have uh greater access and in order to uh get into our community if need be. But also, we would need, I I would think that we should have, uh, for those of lives on uh Thirty First Street should have more than just, I know they were saying use the alley, but we should at least has a, think about making at least one way going to Eastern Avenue from Perry Street. Um, i- i- it, you know, opposed to c- closing it off. I mean, if you had an event, you know, you have everyone trying to, you know, leave out uh at the same time. I mean, hopefully we'd never get to that. But I mean, I would think that that would be my thought on that would be so that it's one way of. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, so. Did you hear me?
Um, you you cut off.
Yeah.
Yes, and so it's like you agree that it should be open and you're suggesting like, um, if we could contemplate to potentially make it into a one-way street heading towards Eastern.
Yes.
So on the drawing, if you can hand me back the share.
Mm-hmm.
I can show you what what traffic does now, sir.
So our city clerk has alerted us that we have less than a minute. Council, can I um get a motion to add more time to the clock, please?
I'd like to move that we add ten minutes.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a second?
Seconded.
Then second by Luke and Jared. Um, any objection? Discussion, abstention? Okay, so we're all in agreement that we need ten more minutes. Thank you, council. So ten more minutes on the clock, Melissa. Go ahead, Neil. Uh, you go, you.
Uh, yeah, can you hear the screen with me?
Say again.
He's trying to share the screen, but Neil, you heard that, I mean, the the comment from the resident, um.
Yeah, so you you could come down Thirty First and it's designed to make a right onto Perry and out to Eastern.
That's correct.
So, uh, the concept is now that you can make a right, but you cannot make a left going back to Perry.
That is correct.
Okay, that that's that's the way that we have the concept design.
Okay, I I, yeah, like I dropped in in a few minutes, you know, behind time and I just wanted to, you know, to make that, you know, voice that opinion. And also that may help with that. Uh, I know some other communities um have not to have uh local traffic signs posted. And, you know, I believe we, I haven't done a study to see how effective it is, but I I think it it can help.
Perfect. Thank you for the suggestions and for being here tonight, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anybody else um from the community wishes to speak on this specific point right now? Okay, who, um, I have Brian Neller. So the bollards are being, so the bollards are being replaced. Oops, sorry. The bollards are being replaced with a mountable curb. That makes sense. Traffic pattern is the same as now. Correct, Neil?
Pretty, yeah, pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much, Brian. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so. All right, anything on Facebook, Jared? All right, thank you so much. All right, so I guess we'll move on to the second part of this presentation. Um, and council, if you guys need to revisit or think about the things that were talked about today regarding Perry, um, to get through and it could be in a different uh work session agenda, okay?
Am I, am I done?
Um, do you need to show anything regarding the Perry and Thirty First interception? If you could put, if you could give um Melissa back the the screen share?
Sure, we'll figure out how to do a stop share. Does that work, Melissa?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Uh, Neil, hold on, before you go.
Okay.
Uh, we also have like the pictures for the next session of Perry and Thirty First.
Yes.
Part of it, um, can, uh, council, do you guys have any questions regarding the the drawings that are right here from Perry and Thirty First? Uh, Luke, go ahead. Follow, Jimmy?
Thanks, mayor. Um, so just to be clear on sort of the path forward here, um, I mean, I didn't hear any complaints with this project tonight, um, this pattern. What I heard from the mayor is that we should move forward with this um and maybe on a parallel track seek what continue seeking what can be done with Eastern. Um, I don't know if we, if that's what everybody wants to do. I'm not sure. I mean, I'm not even sure. Maybe that's what I wanna do. Um, I just a- I'm asking sort of mayor and council, what's the, do we have, and I do, do we have an understanding of what what's gonna happen next here with this?
So I'll call upon you guys to ask, but mainly was like if you guys would like to see Eastern continue, bring it up to a next work session because I'm not sure if we have enough information today to to determine. But I'll hear from you guys to figure out if you guys wanna like, you know, drop it completely, it's dropped, but if you guys want it added to a future agenda, then it's added to a future agenda. Uh, so Jimmy, you're next. Oh, Luke did answer your question.
Yeah, so I think in my mind, would, just so Neil has instruction, they're going forward with this and then if we want to revisit the closing of Eastern, that that impetus is on us to bring forward. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, but I will hear from concerts. That's what you guys want. That's that's what I said if you have some more information.
Would you mind if I add, you know what Luke said?
Please.
So this project, I think it's under five thousand square feet, the the new island. Um, which means permit wise, it it'll go very fast. Um, so if that's what you want to do, it's not like the other projects that you don't have to go through stormwater concepts and everything like that and natural resource inventories. So you could construct this and then be working on trying to figure out what you wanna do with the rest. Um, you know, the rest of Perry Street. And closing that. Is that what you're, I just wanna clarify that.
Luke?
Um, yeah, I I was just trying to clarify to make sure Neil, city staff, mayor and council had a had a common understanding of everything that was gonna be done and I would say that I'm comfortable with him moving ahead of this. I would say that before we do, maybe he could touch base with tool design and make sure, you know, they, if they have any thoughts on it, they can, they can kind of give thoughts, um, and and because I think we have some time here is what I'm hearing. Um, so we can sort of, maybe they can have a conversation with tool design on on this, see if they have any comments and we can work from there.
Yeah, so Karush has the drawings. You can just ship them over and just give my phone number. I don't know who the tool's working on it, but we.
I have, I have initiated that.
So. Work out.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Jimmy?
Uh, I guess it's the same thing. What was the timeline on it? And I know we're not supposed to talk about Perry Street, but maybe you could just do a one-sentence answer about the idea of making uh one way that, you know, which which Aaron suggested.
Um. As with the islands that we have in there, one way?
No, Perry Street from Thirty First to Eastern, Thirty Fifth to Eastern.
The problem is you're gonna, you're gonna touch, you're gonna, you're gonna get into the district.
Okay.
And then the, then it just opens up the can of worms again.
And, and last one was, what was the timeline on this, getting it all done?
Uh, Karush said I could have till next week.
So I think also Jimmy, they're try, I, am I correct in saying you guys are trying to get this done before the the winter hits? Uh, to try to get it done this year? Is that correct, Mr. Kamali?
Well, we're trying to do that because we have the grant and we wanna make sure that uh we get the project going because you know, if you guys give us a clear, you know, direction, it's better than wait until the closure of Perry because I know that that's gonna take a long time. And when I attended the meeting last, you know, Tuesday with Neil, the way, you know, I saw everybody weighing in, they're not in favor of, you know, doing this ultimately. And then you have to go through the deep eye to get the permit, which on Memorial Park right now, we spent almost a year and we haven't got anything yet. So I wanna make sure that the council be aware of this situation, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Jimmy, you got your answer basically as right away also because that way they could, um, they could also be fully aware what the cost looks like. The longer we wait, the higher the prices also will go in if it hits, if we hit a wall when it comes to supply um accessibility, we have time to be able to address that issue. Um, and if we delay, we might run out of time. So they're ready to start like as soon as they talk to tool design to see if there's a problem. Okay, so I'm gonna go with Valerie and then Jared.
Um, yeah, well, thank you. Um, I know this is a challenging um spot in our city um for traffic and for um, you know, improving our infrastructure. So I think I think this plan looks good to me. Um, I think we should still consider investigating um, how Perry Street between thirty first and Eastern can be addressed. Um, so I think that's something we should definitely keep working toward, making sure that that's a safer area for everyone. So but for now, I think this is a good, good thing. So thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Jared, and you guys, Dumi, so.
Time is up, mayor.
Speaking. If you're not speaking, can you please shut your mic down? Because we have about four or five mics going on, and I'm getting messages saying that there's a lot of feedback as well. Um, so Jared, the first yours?
Mayor, before you move on, the time is up.
Um, can I have five minutes? Council?
Some of. Seconded.
Any discussion, objection, abstention? Hearing none. Add five more minutes, Melissa. Jared, the first yours.
Yep, I just want to thank you, Neil, for going through this. And, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces here. You have two states that you're trying to work with. It's just quite quite the challenge. So I appreciate the time you've, um, you've spent on you've spent on this and and kind of navigating something very helpful for the stormwater issues we're experiencing, also being mindful of the traffic dynamics we're trying to go through. So I, yeah, I'm I'm I like how this is coming together. Um, and I'm, you know, I'll just echo Valerie's thoughts on, you know, project as is, but just, you know, maybe us as a city having some additional reflections on the, um, uh, traffic on Perry. So thank you. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, Brian Neller did, one way will cause problems for either the alley houses or the thirty eight hundred block of thirtieth street. That's why they didn't do it. So that's food for thought. Um, so to be, I think we were clear earlier, but to make sure we're clear. Um, it seems like we're on consensus to move on the what we currently have in in the screen with intersection of Perry in thirty first. Uh, Mr. Kamali will talk to with tool design to figure out if there's anything they need to add or regarding the studies that do that could affect or in order for them to add as part of their plan. Uh, mayor and council and, you know, city manager and the team is going to like brainstorm and think about, um, if they need to bring this up back once again, um, when it comes to the Perry side to figure out what turn is we could and not done. But at this point, the closure of Eastern Perry does not depend on us moving forward on the intersection of Perry and thirty first project. A hundred percent clear. Uh, the thing is, we, um, we do need to have a talk with the community to let them know that this portion is moving forward. And we're still like, you know, trying, you know, the barriers we have hit with the other part, with the eastern part. And also like, you know, that the work's going to figure out what else could be done, if anything. Okay, so that would understand that. It's a parallel route that we're taking, but works needs to be done, especially as the season is changing to make sure we we start finding the solution to this part. All right, Mr. Kamali, any, you have any questions regarding any clarity you need from us?
Uh, no, thank you, mayor. The only thing that I want, this plan is ready to be presented to the community. If you guys are okay, we can, I can work with Neil to set up a time and present it to the community as soon as possible.
So I would say work with us in the schedule to make sure I think a Saturday meeting at ten AM worked very well last time. Um, so that we could at least attend on it. But yeah, um, yeah, I think that that'd be a wise thing to do because I don't think they're fully aware that this is this is coming as fast as it might be coming so that we're able to save ourselves from them, you know, from the community feeling like we're 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 doing a lot of great things in the city, and I think it's making people feel like a little nervous that a lot of things are happening. They're not sure what's going on. Okay, so if we could, that will help.
Yeah, we'll do that. But as you suggested, I talked to Neil and we can have it on the Saturday. You remember you were concerned about having it on Saturday. So Neil and I can, you know, make that happen on Saturday.
Mr. Kamali, you're cutting off. I don't I don't know if it's me, but you're cutting off.
Can you hear me now? Yes. No, what did I said?
Karush?
Yes.
Neil, so why don't you throw this by tool and then we can have that discussion and see how it affects what they're doing? Um, make sure don't have to do any major revisions and then we can, you know, you want to schedule a meeting. Be more than glad to, we'll figure out how to keep that working.
Perfect. Thank you guys so much. And so Jack and Tracy from thirty first street. I just chiming in, we're happy it's coming fast. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you guys also for being here. Thank you, Mr. Kamali. And thank you, Neil, as well for navigating, as the other council member said, the the hard waters that we face between DC and and the city and and all that great stuff. Uh, thank you for making sure you got that information and navigating both. All right, perfect. Thank you so much and have a good night. Now now we are letting you go.
Thank you, Neil.
All right, so moving on to the next, um, presentation, we have presentation in this. Um, thank you, Melissa. Presentation and discussion of the staff draft of West High, uh, West Heightsville dash Queen Chapel Sector Plan and proposed sectional map amendment. The main council received a presentation from Brandon Rolfe, project manager of Community Planning Division with N M N C P P C. Um, Mr. Um, Roll, are you here?
I am here, mayor.
Go ahead, the first yours.
Okay, is it okay if I share my screen?
Uh, yes, Melissa will 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 give you sharing power.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, mayor and council. It's good to be here and to present to you the staff draft West Heightsville Queen Chapel Sector Plan and sectional map amendment. Just to kind of preview our presentation. Where we are in the process is the plan was released to the public in July. Um, and there is a joint public hearing of the Prince George's County Planning Board and the Prince George's County Council on October the eleventh at five PM. That's not, that is the opportunity for everyone, whether it be the city or individual residents to provide their feedback on the plan. Um, following that, uh, public hearing, uh, the planning board will review the testimony and decide whether or not to adopt the plan and endorse the sectional map amendment, and then transmit them to the county council that would, who would ultimately approve them. Um, I'm going to try to speed through tonight's presentation. Uh, there's more slides than really necessary. Um, I want to kind of highlight the issues that are are most relevant to the city and, uh, jump through so we can get to your comments and questions. Um, talked a little bit about community and stakeholder engagement, the elements of the plan, major issues and recommendations, and then the timeline for approval. Uh, can you see my screen?
No, no.
We cannot.
Okay. Uh, let me try this again. How about now?
Yes.
It's amazing what hitting the share button will do. Uh, let me keep going. Um, we'll talk a little bit about the planned timeline, uh, moving on through. The plan area is located in northwestern part of the county. You're familiar with that. Um, this is a picture of the planned boundary. Um, it's considerably larger than the last plan for the West Heightsville Transit Station to capture neighborhoods that are impacted by the proximity of the transit station. Excuse me, the West Heightsville Metro Station along with the Heightsville Crossing Metro Station. Uh, here are the municipal boundaries, as you can see, um, areas north of Arundel Road and east of Queen Chapel Road within the city. Uh, this plan's been going on for two years. Uh, we conducted quite a bit of engagement, uh, almost all of it virtual, unfortunately, due to the pandemic. Uh, we had several focus groups, conducted a number of stakeholder interviews with key property owners, organizations, state agencies, counties and county agencies and municipalities. We conducted a multilingual virtual community engagement, uh, including, uh, an open house, visioning workshops, um, several online meetings. Uh, we had a number of online engagement tools, which one thing that has come out of the pandemic, of course, are new and innovative ways to engage the public and, uh, tools such as our twenty four seven virtual town hall are are things that really allowed us to convey a lot of information virtually to the community. The, uh, sector plans a conference of sector plan like all of the plans in Prince George's County. We cover eight interrelated elements, including land use, economic prosperity, natural environment, transportation, housing, uh, community heritage, culture and urban design, uh, healthy communities and public facilities. Um, I'm going to summarize some of the major issues here. You can see the slide. Primarily, uh, the main issue is that we've had a metro station in this area of the county since nineteen ninety three, and until about two years ago, we had no development there. Um, as, uh, development pressure continues to grow from the District of Columbia, we anticipate that there will be quite a bit of pressure to redevelop around the West Heightsville Metro Station. Uh, so we wanted to get out in front of that with a plan that not only creates opportunities for P new people to come work, live, play um, in this area, but also, uh, creating new amenities for existing residents. Um, several of the challenges include a lack of housing immediately around the metro station. Lots of pedestrian access and safety issues. The metro station itself is located adjacent to the floodplain, and that creates quite a bit of, uh, challenge that has to be resolved before the metro station can truly, uh, host transit oriented development. Um, the area is overretailed compared to other areas in the county. Um, and, uh, there, the community identified a lack of gathering spaces as a real challenge here. Um, key recommendations of the plan, um, basically, uh, redeveloping around the West Heightsville Station with with, uh, vertical mixed use development. Primarily residential, uh, with, uh, community serving retail on the ground floor. Uh, this is a twenty five year plan, so if at some point in the future the office market rebounds, that would certainly be something that would be welcome, but not at the expense of locating it at our downtowns such as Heightsville Crossing. Um, creating a main street leading to the station along Hamilton Street in Heightsville. Um, incentivizing and supporting, uh, opportunities to attract and retain our local and minority owned businesses. Um, that's something that we heard from the community loud and clear that is a, uh, asset in the community that they like, um, and certainly sets this area apart from other parts of the county. Um, so, uh, finding out ways to keep um, and attract new local and small businesses, certainly, uh, something important to the community. Um, and also retrofitting a lot of the existing streets, um, and building the new streets to the county's urban street design standards. I think you're familiar with with that type of, uh, construction, given the last agenda item. Uh, but really looking for opportunities to accommodate stormwater management, pedestrians and bicycles on our streets and create a safe walkable environment around the metro station and in the surrounding communities. Um, and finally, a conference of stormwater management flood mitigation, uh, approach that, um, creates opportunities while, uh, for redevelopment, uh, while creating a better stormwater management situation than we have today. Um, obviously, this is an area that has a lot of diversity in housing, um, a lot of options uh, for people at various stages of their life, and we want to enhance that with with newer products and different products to make sure that this is a, this is a community that, uh, people can age in place, um, um, kind of, and have a different housing type to support that. Um, making create, uh, excuse me, creating connections to healthcare opportunities, to healthy food. Always a key thing and something that the plan makes some recommendations on, uh, making sure that we're incorporating, uh, public art and other amenities in the community that make a really attractive place that attracts people, people want to be there. And key to that is constructing and expanding new parks, recreation and public open space facilities uh, to make sure that, uh, there are places for people to gather, uh, to enjoy and to be outdoors. Uh, Plan for George's twenty thirty five, the county's general plan, uh, identifies a number of centers where growth is recommended to be concentrated over the next twenty five years. Uh, West Heightsville is one of those centers, and this is this is the proposed boundary for that center. Uh, the the orange area is the core where you'd see the highest densities of development, and then the blue area is a transitional area where densities would reduce as you get closer to existing neighborhoods. Um, the plan also recommends expanding the Prince George's Plaza Regional Transit District to the north to add a couple of properties that are basically across the street from the metro station. Uh, recommendations for future land use largely, uh, keep the existing community the same. Significant changes here would be those areas that are currently recommended, or excuse me, that are proposed in this plan for mixed use around the metro station, um, and around the intersection of, uh, Queen's Chapel Road and Chilum Road. Um, and also two neighborhood mixed use areas. These are areas that we recommend to be, uh, reclassified into our commercial neighborhood zone, which, um, is basically similar to what you would see in downtown Mount Mount Rainier, uh, the, um, having, uh, ground floor retail, ground floor restaurants, um, with, uh, an upper floor or two of residential or office. Um, we're looking at concentrating those areas along Hamilton Street in Heightsville and along Varnum Street where the existing retail is. Uh, we don't anticipate, and in fact, we recommend retaining the retail, uh, that surrounds the K Wood Theater. Um, but over time, looking at redeveloping the north side of Varnum Street into something similar, uh, where you have a walkable main street environment that serves that immediate neighborhood. As I said, the, one of the key goals is to retrofit the existing street network with better bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So the streets in blue would be streets that would be constructed or retrofit to the county's urban street design standards. And this map shows, uh, bicycle and pedestrian, new bicycle and pedestrian facilities to connect not only to the metro station and other jurisdictions, but to the regional trail network which along the northwest branch, which serves, uh, commuting traffic as well. There are a couple amendments proposed in the sector plan for the green infrastructure network. Uh, one is to add a forested area that that is currently not in the green infrastructure network. And then there are a couple that, uh, that would remove a couple of areas from the green infrastructure network because they're already developed. Bear with me just a second here. Well, I'm going to keep going. Um, the, sorry. The, uh, parks, recreation, open spaces, I mentioned, are the key to creating a sense of place throughout the planned area. We recommend a number of resource parks that would be for protecting the natural environment. Um, a few plazas and greens that would be central gathering places. And also several greenways that would be serve as linear parks along, uh, along new streets and, uh, bike paths. Um, and those are key to, um, really creating that sense of place along those corridors and connecting across the Anacostia River, uh, excuse me, the northwest branch of the Anacostia River. Uh, this is just a visual of a proposed extension of Buchanan Street across Queen Chapel Road. Uh, roughly behind where the shops at Queen's Chilum are now, uh, showing the concept of a linear park. Um, and some of the new buildings that could occur over the next twenty five years in that location. The general idea being that growth would occur at the station, and then as that area builds out, uh, other areas in the core and edge would build out subsequent to that. Uh, this is just a, a look at a proposed plaza at the metro station. And then, uh, finally, uh, something, uh, of particular relevance, uh, the plan recommends as Queenstown Apartments, uh, redevelop um, realigning, uh, Queenstown Drive, um, and then creating a new trail crossing that would cross the northwest branch, serve as a park and connect to Jamestown Road, which would be the closest pedestrian access to the West Heightsville Metro Station. This is the current zoning of the area. The areas in pink are in the local transit-oriented zones. That are designed to provide for transit-oriented development around the station. And this is a list of the proposed rezonings. One of particular importance here would be zoning change seventeen, like I said earlier. Rezoning the area along Varnum Street from. Excuse me, to the commercial neighborhood zone that would allow for that main street feel as redevelopment occurs.
Rowan, give me one minute. Council. The clerk has alerted me that there's only two minutes left on the clock. Will you guys like to add more time?
I move that we add ten minutes.
Okay, ten minutes. It's been probably moving second discussion, objection, abstentions. Hearing nine, Melissa, add ten more minutes to once the time expires, okay? Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The. Implementation of the plan, of course, could take anywhere from from now when it gets approved next year. For the next twenty-five years, so a lot of the things that are recommended in the plan may take a few years to come to fruition. They really require the actions of all stakeholders working together in the public, private institutional nonprofit arenas. And it requires approval of the sectional map amendment to rezone properties to implement the vision of the plan. And so. Where we are in the schedule right now, as I said at the beginning, we have a public hearing coming up on the eleventh, that's the. That is the time for the public to provide feedback and input that the planning board can consider in its adoption. Which is scheduled for January of twenty twenty-three. It would then go on to the county council with approval in the spring. All comments are due to the clerk of the county council. No later than five P M. On Wednesday, October twenty-sixth. Written comments should be emailed to the count, to the clerk of the council, or they may be faxed. And please don't send letters, send them by email. You can find out more about the plan and the SMA on our website, and that concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, thank you so much. Council, I'm going to you guys. I'm gonna start with war two since it borders, it partially borders you. And then move on to war one. So Jared, Valerie, Luke, Jimmy.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking the time to go over this. I know we. It's been a long road and I appreciate, appreciate you all stewarding us through this. One thing I was just curious about, I know, I think it, I'm trying to remember who presented last time, it might have, might have been Sarah. And just curious, you know, this a lot, this this redevelopment, especially around the West Heightsville Metro. Area which includes part of our city is mostly low and moderate, moderate income residents, mostly renters. And I know that, you know, getting feedback from folks in apartments and particular residents of color are. Especially non-English speakers has been more challenging. How are you all able to, during the process, incorporate that feedback? And that input into this, I would say honestly, very significant reimagining of the the community and the built form there.
Well, and I've been looking forward to doing this all night. I'm gonna turn that over to Sarah to answer.
Yes, I believe I was the one that presented last time. So, you know, as you, as Scott did a, Mr. Rowe did a review earlier of some of the engagement we did. And I know you all are very aware of some of the different virtual engagement that we did and outreach. So, you know, we took all that and that has informed this plan. We listened very carefully. To everything that we heard through that process. And we do feel like that is very much reflected in the plan that that has been written and put out for the public. I'm, I, you know, I just, to be very honest, it was very challenging to do this outreach during the pandemic. And we, you know, we're aware that we didn't reach everybody. We were actually out at, I don't know if you heard, we were out at. Did Parking Day in Heightsville on Hamilton Street, which is, you know, one of the main street segments in the, that we highlight in the plan. And you know what? Most people had not heard about the plan and that's both, you know, sad, but at the same time. Is exciting for us now that, you know, we're kind of moving back into doing a lot of in-person type engagement. So, you know, in hindsight. I don't think we reached as, you know, everyone that we wish we would have reached. But at this point in the process, we are planning to send out postcards to all. Premise addresses within the plan area that are gonna be in English and Spanish. To make sure people are aware about the joint public hearing that's coming up in October. Because this really is, you know, if we didn't reach someone during the engagement we did during the pandemic, this really is that important moment to. To get involved and and and, you know, provide comments and feedback on the plan. But I will say the the feedback that we did get is very much reflected in this plan.
No, thank you, and that's, that's really, that's really helpful to to know. I know that. You know, I, it's often, I mean, often hard to rely on the, reach a lot of the target populations in the area. I appreciate your. Previous efforts and your continuing efforts, because I, I really, you know, this, there's a lot of opportunity to improve the built form, to add more density around. High-capacity transit, make this area home to even more folks that, you know, need access. And need access to transit and walkability and so forth. So I really appreciate you, the work you're doing here, just. Encourage, you know, as you continue to do outreach to keep on. Reaching out to folks as much as possible, it's, you know, because there, this, this is, this will be a very fundamental change to an area that has. Essentially been the same in terms of built forms since all those buildings. You know, strip malls, big box stores, et cetera, were were originally placed there, so. Thank you very much. I think the other question I might have is on the, you know, all the new park space. Is that stuff that will kind of fall within the domain of M N C P P C parks or in the county or?
Yeah, a lot of the the recommendations for park expansion that is gonna fall under M N C P P C's domain. As far as, you know, it can be acquisition of additional properties. Yeah, so that's gonna be M N C. I'm trying to think off the top of my head if I can recall anything else. Scott, can you think of anything?
Oh, I think some of the smaller parks would be, might be privately built and owned with a public use easement that allows the public access.
Okay, perfect. That was, that was exactly the answer or question, the answer to the question I was looking for. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Jared, Valerie. The first yours.
Yeah, thank you. So, thank you for presenting this. I have a few questions and thoughts. I think my first question is obviously stormwater and stormwater management is gonna be a major issue in twenty-five years. I'm sure this plan captures that, you know, those flood expectations that might be happening in the near future. I know when we were looking for schools for the Adelphi area, most of that area was untouchable by the county school system because of the floodplain issues. And so I just wanna, you know, ask about that and in what Jared had just asked about. If it's M N C P P C parks, you know, what does that maintenance plan look like in the future? Just if you guys have taken that into consideration as well as the stormwater. I did like the mountain biking amenities, so thank you for putting that in. That was a cute idea and I love the idea of having a mountain biking center. Around the transit-oriented development. My third question is, have you considered adding any space for schools? You know, every development project and every planning, you know, has somebody asked, well, if you build more housing, where are those kids going to go to school? So that's my third question. Have you considered if there were locations around this area for schools, what that looks like? And I think that's it, yeah.
Thank you, Valerie. Go ahead.
So I'll say the, as far as stormwater management goes, that's a big part of this plan. As you know, areas that developed in the nineteen fifty's and sixty's and seventy's were developed prior to stormwater management regulations. It was basically get the water into the river as quickly as possible, which doesn't work anymore. We, this, the station's located at the north end of the Anacostia River Flood Control Project, so. There are flood risks in the area, especially for the properties that are on the north side of Chilum Road. And south of the metro station on the north side of the river, and so that's something that that the plan recommends really looking at from a regional perspective. It's not just, you know, i- it seems counterintuitive to a lot of people, but as redevelopment and development occurs. You get a net positive stormwater impact because new development occurs with stormwater. That has to control its own stormwater and often it's replacing development that didn't have to control its own stormwater. But also looking at the regional impact, I mean, Silver Spring drains into West Heightsville, Wheaton drains into West Heightsville. Langley Park drains into West Heightsville, and so it's important that. And these discussions are ongoing now, but it's really important. That those conversations continue and that the county, the Park and Plan Commission and other stakeholders are looking at that. Comprehensive solution. It's not, it's not enough, the area is just not large enough and property parcels that people might develop. Aren't large enough to treat everyone's stormwater on their own property, so it takes a bit of creativity to be able to do that. We get the school question quite a bit. We work very closely with Prince George's Public, Prince George's County Public Schools on our planning efforts. We, we asked them this question as we started this round of plans that we've been doing the last few years and and what they want us to do is just. Keep them in the loop and let, they want to. You know, if, if a, if they need a site, they think a site's gonna be needed over the next twenty-five years, they let us know and. And and ask us to help them with that, but for a plan, for this plan, there, there are no sites. And so, you know, they prefer to deal with the school capacity issues through their own internal processes. The old nineteen eighty's suburban model of every time we do a plan, let's get thirty, forty, fifty acres for a school. Just doesn't work anymore, especially in this area of the county where everything's so built up and dense. So that, that's an issue that they're looking at system-wide. We kind of, they're in the middle of their redistricting process right now, which, you know, it would have been. Better timing for us if that was complete and we had a better idea of where kids are going to school. But it's, it's kind of a situation that's kind of in flux right now. System-wide. This, as long as the system has capacity, it's gonna be very difficult for them to get state funding for new schools. You know, I think what they're being told is you need to redistrict rather than build new schools. They're building the five schools through the public-private partnership and, you know, from their standpoint, and I hate to have to speak for them. They, they said, you know, between those schools, the the kind of ebb and flow. And what they see happening, that the school impacts, you know, they'll be able to handle it. It's not every day that a public agency says, you know, put that on us, so we're glad to do it that, but that they are. They have requested that they they take the lead on the school impacts.
Like, I just wanted to add, we can't really take too much credit for the mountain bike skills park idea. It was included in the county's master plan of transportation as a general recommendation for the Heightsville vicinity. So we did, we saw that and thought that this area was a perfect opportunity with all the woodland and parkland. Because it's the kind of, you know, a skills park is something you can, it's very minimally invasive in the existing. You know, forested areas and it's also represents a community that's underserved as far as recreation users in the county. So thank you for noticing that.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Jimmy and Luke, go ahead.
I'll be short. We did a traffic study and, you know, top traffic problems was on Queen's Chapel and Chilum. And do you do any, have you, I know you do zoning, but is there any discussion about traffic issues, you know, in ten years and that? Because Chilum and Queen's Chapel is already kind of a disaster.
Well, there's a couple of things there. Obviously, an area that has more pedestrian activity and has more people living and working there, we're looking for. You know, traffic to be calmed and slowed down. The State Highway Administration is in the final stages of reconstructing that intersection. And, you know, they've already added expanded sidewalks, taken out the free right turn lanes. And those are positive impacts for pedestrian safety. And the key thing that we're trying to implement through our new zoning ordinance is that. If you're gonna build housing next to a metro station, you don't need a lot of parking, you don't want a lot of people driving there. And that's something that, you know, we, we, we received a lot of feedback on. You, if you're going to live next to a metro station, you should anticipate that you probably won't have a parking spot, you won't. You, you know, that's why you pay extra money to live next to a metro station. And, you know, I think the plan recommends extending, extending or expanding transit service to get some people out of their cars. And we'll continue to see what the impact of work from home is on commuting. We know that Queen Chapel Road is fair, it's, it's a work in progress. You know, they went down, they, it was overbuilt, it went down from six to four lanes about ten years ago. And so S H A continues to model, to. Monitor that and hopefully coordinate with D C and 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 make sure the traffic is flowing. In that area, but, you know, I think our primary concern is so that people can access the metro station, access the amenities there. Is for the people that live and work in this area. And make sure that they can get safely to their destinations. And that's the focus of the plan.
Okay, thank you. Luke, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Question about, I saw the way you guys were looking at improving the. Sort of the the bike and walking. Where the trail intersects Queen Chapel and Jamestown Road there and the nice design for the future of the plaza. Is there, I know that was just kind of like a picture of the, of what the future could portend. Is there any timeline on improvements to that, that crosswalk across Queen's Chapel? Because it's a big. A big issue that we get, we hear a lot from residents and that, you know, I feel I'm trying to walk or bike to the, to the West Heightsville Metro. So is there sort of a short-term fix before we get to kind of the long-term? Picture.
Yeah, the, so obviously that's a more a longer-term type solution, but again, that was, you know, just a conceptual rendering. But to answer your question, I believe we do have some recommendations about. Doing like artistic treatments to intersections and doing some of these different aesthetic interventions and also. Different traffic calming devices. For those crossings and intersections that have, people have found to be less safe. And there's been more and more issues, especially like that trail crossing at Queen's Chapel. So those are some of those shorter-term, low-hanging fruit that can happen in the near term. As opposed to that, you know, sort of major reconstruction of that area. But those recommendations are in the plan and those intersection, key intersections are identified.
Okay, is there any timeline on when those could happen?
The plan, the, the, the plan looks at short, medium and long-term, short-term would be zero to five years. It doesn't get more specific than that.
And then I noticed you got, you all said sort of redevelop of Queen's Chapel. Or Queenstown, is that in discussion anywhere? Is there like, are there developers or the redevelopment authority or something? Is that, is, is redevelopment being discussed of those properties of the shopping center? Is that? Because I just haven't heard this, the first time I'm hearing that, so I'm just wondering where that's coming from.
So the redevelopment of the shopping centers, I believe that's sort of, that's long-term, you know, again, this is a twenty-five-year plan. Those conversation, I mean, we have not been privy to any specific conversation about, you know, redeveloping the shops at Queen's Chilum or anything like that. So I mean, the answer to that is, is no, um, as far as Queenstown Apartments, you know, we did speak to, um, the owners there, um, and, um, I believe that's, if I recall, Mid-City owns Queenstown Apartments. But no specific plans. But again, these are things that are, you know, twenty-five years, what might, what might happen and, you know, this hopes to guide that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, in my, yeah, I did notice, um, the plan was incorporated, I was very happy to see that, uh, cause that was gonna be one of my questions, um, if anything else was gonna be added to it. Um, once the council gets their hands on it, they should be able to have a lot more input, correct, on what the plan looks like?
So, uh, at this point, I think, uh, given the timeframe, the council should prepare its comments and, and send them to the county council as to what, you know, what feedback you have on the plan, what you'd like to see in the plan, what you think is, we got wrong, what you think we got right. Um, especially what you thought we got right. Um, but anything in there that, uh, you know, you wanna reflect the city's position on the, on the plan, uh, I think this is.
I meant the county council, when I call council, it wasn't, it wasn't the city council. So, yeah, cause the next step will be like, you know, like you addressed, it was gonna be the county council, right? So from this step, the next step is for them to review it and add, uh, before they take it to legislation, is that the next?
The Prince George's County Planning Board, uh, would take a, will, will, will be the next one to act on it. Uh, they'll, they would, uh, take into account the public testimony and, uh, you know, their, their own, uh, points of view and, uh, adopt the plan, probably with some amendments based on what they heard in the testimony. Um, and then they send it on to the county council.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for five more minutes, so we give the opportunity for people to speak and, and finalize my thought, cause I couldn't even get one minute in. I can have five minutes on the clock.
So move. Second.
So properly move in second, any discussion, abstention, objection, hearing none, and Melissa had five more minutes. You know, so thank you all the council for asking the various questions. Waterstorm management is gonna be a big thing, especially like, you know, how it's a floating plane. And the plant could be beautiful, but if that thing is like underwater, it's not gonna be very positive for people to walk and bike. So I will highly can, you know, I highly ask that every single feature that could be added, there's waterstorm management, uh, protection, whether it's rain gardens, flexible payment, anything that you could do to increase that, um, it'll be important. Because if not, I feel like, you know, for asking people to heavily walk and bike and, and not take vehicles to be able to take the metro, that's gonna be key, um, to be able to utilize the, the park and the facilities, um, successfully. Because that's, uh, as we have seen in like, you know, the rain that we had last year, um, Brinwood was under, uh, North Brinwood was underwater, Emerson was like in deep trouble, um, and quite a few of the poor towns were in severe, uh, trouble, right? So I will say, um, I know there's like a lot of it put on, but I will say like even more needs to be added to taking consideration, not just what's going on right now. But if this is something that's gonna be planned to like survive for the next twenty-five years, it's only gonna get worse. So a big emphasis on that and Valerie, thank you for asking for the question regarding the schools. It does sound like we're gonna have to go to the Board of Education and ask what the plan is. Because the reality is, is like, if we're pushing more people to be there, um, based on what we learned, we cannot let it, um, we cannot, what, basically it's not like if the children will come, um, the, the schools will come, right? Uh, the reality is like, it's taken a while for us to be where we're at and they are gonna be building a, uh, middle school in Adele Fight. But even as it is, like even with the schools building, like the, the schools that we currently have still need a lot of work, including the ones in our area, both Maranier and Thomas Stone need a lot of work. And there are in the plan to do it, but right now we have more kids that we should be having in our schools. So that's gonna be key as well. So, um, I will leave it at that, uh, but thank you guys for coming. I'm gonna open it up to the public to see if there's anybody that would like to add anything. Uh, members of the community, if you'd like to talk about the subject, please, um, type, uh, your name, um, when it comes to this item. Can you please go ahead and type your name to, um, name, street, uh, and block number to the chat? And I did see the, the message from Ophelia, it's not about this specific plan and we could, we could answer it after. Okay, um, Jared, anybody else on Facebook regarding, um, the, the plan in front of us? All right, and I don't see nobody in the chat asking, um, regarding it. Okay, well, thank you guys, um, so much, uh, both Sarah and Scott for coming over. Uh, we appreciate your time and the various times that you have come and spoke to us and the various emails you have sent our way to make sure we are informed of the plan. Um, console, read through it, if there's something that you guys, um, need follow up or you guys, you know, a letter we need to write, you know, even discussing some of the items that we, um, strongly feel about, that we have mentioned today. We need to start working on it because, um, time is, time is of the essence, okay? All right, perfect, thank you guys so much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Hello, all right, moving on to the next item. Uh, item number five, updating discussion, the status of finance department, America's receiving update from Ron Wilson, uh, City's Finance Consultant. Uh, Ron, you're on the line, go ahead.
Uh, good evening and, uh, thanks for having me. Ma- Melissa, could you, um, set it so that I can share my screen, please? I believe that everyone received a copy of the, um, financial statements for June thirty, uh, in advance of this meeting. So I thought what I would do is, uh, just highlight a couple of things, uh, that are important from those financial statements. Uh, and then talk about where we are with, uh, our fiscal twenty-one and fiscal twenty-two audits. Uh, and then, um, open it up for any questions that, uh, anyone might have. So I'm gonna start with, uh, uh, budget variances from the fiscal twenty-two budget. Can everybody see this screen?
You could zoom in, that would be helpful.
Can you zoom in? Yeah, can you blow it up?
Yeah, I'll make it, I'll make it a full page, how about that?
No.
Zoom in a little more, sorry.
All right, um, let's see what we can do here.
You might have to go like either five hundred.
That's, that's good, that's good.
Okay, so I can't get the whole page on when it's that big, but I can scroll. So, um, we finished out fiscal twenty-two with a nine hundred and eighty thousand dollar surplus. Since we budgeted for a break even or zero, uh, that means that our, we had a positive overall budget variance of nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And when you looked at the detail, really there were only a handful of things that are driving that number. Uh, first of all, we, we received two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars more in, uh, real estate property taxes than we budgeted for. Uh, in addition, we received almost three hundred and thirty thousand dollars more in state income tax than we budgeted for. And also we received two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars more in speed camera revenue than we budgeted for. Now, um, all of these things, as we go forward, you know, we will refine our budgeting process. But to a large extent, we don't control these numbers. All, all we can do is try to reject them as best that we can. Continuing on the revenue side, our, our residential rental licenses were actually below budget by about fifty-eight thousand. And our parking violations were below budget by a hundred and seventy-five. So just those five items there net to a positive budget variance of six hundred and five thousand dollars of the nine hundred and eighty.
So Ron, one, just to clarify, parking violations were down because we were through COVID time and, um, we were not equally enforcing them and rental licenses, if I'm correct, we cut about fifty percent of the cost originally was scheduled for the, for the rental, uh, residential rental license. Is that the one that we cut fifty percent off?
Uh, I, I don't know, Kamali is shaking, he said yes, so.
Yes, Mayor, that's, that's the case.
I just want to make sure it's clear that it wasn't that.
No, no, we were gonna explain everything, yeah, that's the case.
Yeah, I'll, you know, also keep in mind that these budgets were set very early on and, and conditions can, can change, um, before the fiscal years even start. So, um, over on the expense side, uh, we actually, uh, spent less than budgeted for salaries of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. We spent less than budgeted for medical insurance, uh, that's a hundred and sixty-nine. Um, and we spent more than budgeted for sidewalks and building repairs. And this is largely due to timing. There were expenses that originally had been planned for fiscal twenty-one that didn't get incurred until the early part of fiscal twenty-two. And, and that process happened after the budget was already set. So on the expense side, these three items net, uh, to a positive budget variance of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Everything else, there are dozens of other revenue and expense accounts. When you put them all together, you know, some of them are up, some of them are down. But all combined, they result in a positive budget variance of a hundred and fifteen thousand. So that's the explanation for our positive budget variance for fiscal twenty-two. Sixty percent of it is, is revenue. You know, twenty-five percent or so is, um, uh, expenses and, um, eleven, twelve percent is everything else. All right. So, uh, on this part, if anybody has any questions, um, I'll answer what I can. Kamali might have the information, and if neither one of us have it, we can follow up and get back with you.
All right, thanks, thank you, Ron. I'm, I'm gonna go open it up to console, um, starting with, we're one this time around. Um, we're gonna go with Luke, Jimmy, Jared, Valerie, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just wanna say thank you, Ron, um, for, for doing this work for the city, for, uh, explaining this and for giving this presentation. This is great to have, um, uh, sort of midway through our, our, our budget cycle to have this look back cause it gets us thinking about, you know, what possibly we can do next year. Um, and I wanna thank you, Mr. Kamali, for just being the city manager and keeping an eye on all our expenses and, and getting us in under budget. Um, I really appreciate that. And, you know, just sliding for the mayor and council, um, as we go into the next budget cycle. Um, you know, from my vantage point, this, you know, this gives us some flexibility. Um, and, you know, this, this is a lot of money here. Um, and so, you know, some of this, I think, could be returned to the taxpayers in the form of a tax cut, um, which, which might make sense if these, uh, projections hold through to next year. Um, I understand that salaries and medical insurance, you know, will get baked into the budget and so we may not be able to use that. But the, the, the revenue side, um, especially the state income tax and the property tax revenue. Um, I think that's good news for us and gives us some flexibility to maybe, um, give folks some relief. So thank you, Ron, thank you, Mr. Kamali, that's it.
Jimmy?
Uh, I'll wait until the end, I don't have anything right now, thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy, um, Valerie?
Um, yeah, thank you, this is good. Um, I think, um, one thing that would be helpful in this report going forward is just having the budget versus actual expense kind of side by side, just so I can see what the actual budget was to begin with. I mean, I have it in my PDF that I'm looking at, but it would have been helpful to see it here, just, just going forward. But other than that, thank you. It's great that we have saved so much funding, um, I agree that we should look at, it gives us wiggle room in terms of, um, you know, returning funds back to the taxpayer, so I think that's a good as well, so thank you.
Jared?
Just wanna say thanks, uh, as well, to Kamali and Ron on this. Yeah, and just I'll echo Luke and, um, Valerie's thoughts and, um, yeah, I, and me, I as well, I'm, I'm certainly interested if we're, you know, revenues are higher, expenses are lower and, uh, you know, considering how we bring that, um, how we adjust our tax rate next year, also just want, you know, I'm, I am concerned still about, you know, the potential growth in cost inflation as it drives, uh, labor costs and other costs and just want us to, um, just want us to keep that in mind uh, as we think about how much, um, things may, certain budget line items may incur, uh, next year. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I think that for me, I think we also need to look at the fact that there's various positions that have not been filled. Um, I'm all for like reducing taxes, but having in mind that, um, some of the positions we're working on filling them and they are needed to be filled. Uh, some of the other positions, we filled them, I think maybe two months ago, um, or so, so, um, that's part also of looking into this. So as, as we get the, the final audit, um, for, you know, FY twenty-two, we should be, have a more of a feeling of where we're at. Um, anything else, it's like, you know, expense, but thank you for putting this together. Um, I will ask yes to what Valerie said, like putting both next to each other instead of us digging for it. The other thing is that, can you make sure that? Put lines across the document, I just make into, like the rest of the document. I'll put lines across it like an Excel sheet, so she said for us to follow the numbers, cause I was, I tried doing it in my phone and everything was distorted. So I literally had to go to a computer and I don't always have access to sit down in, in front of a computer. Um, and, oh, well, I'll talk to you guys about the second part, but that will allow for us to be able to follow through, especially in the second part. But when I picked it up from the phone, cause it's a screen smaller, the numbers were distorted, so it was a little bit hard for me to read it. So they wouldn't read across this, this property taxes was, the number was higher, uh, like stand, you know, above it and then it looked like property taxes, the number was three hundred and twenty-nine instead of the two eighty-nine, so it was very hard to follow. So if you guys could do that, it will also make it a little bit easier to follow, okay?
Okay, Kendra. Uh, next, uh, what I wanted to do is talk a little bit about cash. All right, can you see this now?
Can I indulge it?
Yeah, I'll make it bigger.
There you go.
Okay, so, uh, there was some discussion earlier, um, about what our cash status was and, and where our various accounts were. So I thought what I would do is give you, uh, uh, what our cash position was at the end of the fiscal year and then what it is right now. And just, uh, highlight a little bit about this. So, at the end of the fiscal year, we had eight point two million dollars in cash in various, uh, bank accounts. We, we have these truest accounts, general fund, receivables, payables, payroll and operating. These are, are just the various, uh, daily transaction bank accounts that we use. We also have these two MLGIP accounts, they are investment accounts. And currently we have about three point one million dollars between these two. These actually earn interest. And, uh, one of the things that, that I'm going to do going forward is look to put some more of this operating money that we don't need right away into these investment accounts so that we can earn some interest on it. Uh, but they're, they're short-term, so there's nothing that would prevent us from moving it back into operating while we need it. Obviously, I'll, you know, make a presentation to Mr. Kamali and to, uh, the city council. Make sure that everybody is on the same page with what we wanna do with our cash. Now, below this, I wanted to highlight a couple of things. We have some rather significant liabilities, so I'll call them claims against this cash. Um, at the end of the fiscal year, i- if you recall, we got our first half of ARPA funding, uh, at the beginning. uh, at the beginning of fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, we, we, we earned um, almost seven hundred thousand dollars of that money as revenue, because we, we spent it. Um, but that means that at that point in time, we had a liability for two million dollars. In other words, if we don't spend that money, according to the rules of ARPA, we would have to give it back. Now, obviously, we're, we're gonna spend it the way we're supposed to. But until you do, um, you can't recognize that as revenue. So, uh, and we also had some, some other small grant liabilities the same way. We got grant money in advance. We haven't earned it yet, so technically speaking, it's a liability until we do earn it. So, uh, that means that at the end of the fiscal year, we had about two point one million dollars in claims against our cash, just for these, um, uh, grant liabilities. At nine nineteen, we had twelve point two million dollars in the bank. You can see that this number for our general fund money, our main account, went up significantly. Four million dollars worth. Uh, that's because we got our second ARPA payment of two point seven million dollars, uh, as well as the loan proceeds uh, that we're going to use for the Potts Hall redevelopment. That's why the cash balances went up so significantly. So those right now are also claims against cash. You know, we, we haven't earned any of this second ARPA money yet. We will, but we haven't yet. And this loan proceeds for, for Potts Hall, obviously, we're gonna spend that money as well. So that cash isn't free to use for anything else. So our net number at nine nineteen was five point three million dollars. Okay? Um, and then what, so what I'll do is I'll update you about the audits and then I'll, um, I'll, I'll throw it open for questions about either topic, if that's okay. Um, we are close to, oh, I'm sorry.
I said, go ahead.
Okay. We are close to, uh, completion of the fiscal twenty-one audit. Uh, it's, it's in the auditor's hands. Everything to do with it uh, is on them right now, and they've told us that they expect to, um, issue the audit report by September thirty. Or about ten days from now. Um, for fiscal twenty-two, uh, we sent all of our initial material to the auditors in the first week of this month, September. And the auditors have already come back to us with their uh, sample testing that they want backup for. And we're working on that currently, and our plan is to have all of the auditors' requests for information completed by the end of this month. And in discussions with the auditors, uh, they don't see any reason why, um, we can't have the fiscal twenty-two audit completed by November thirty, which would be really good news. So, uh, that's, uh, all that I had planned to say. So if anybody has any questions?
Hold on one second, Ron. Um, council, we have been alerted by the city, um, I think it's either by Jared or Melissa. I'm not sure which of them both are. But, um, that we have three minutes remaining. We guys like to add some time to the clock now.
Let's see if we can wrap it up in three minutes.
I'll talk fast.
All right. I'll see, I'll see you guys in four. All right. We're gonna go, um, with Jared, Valerie, Jimmy and Luke.
Uh, I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Valerie?
Um, thank you, and thank you for your work to get FY twenty-two done, as well as FY twenty-one done so quickly. Thank you.
Jimmy, Luke?
Uh, I'm not sure that you have to come back to council if you, just putting it into a money market that's immediately accessible. I don't know any, you know, regulations that you have to do that.
Fair enough.
I mean, I, you know, unless anybody disagrees, uh, on that, as long as it's completely accessible, you know, it should go in a, you know, money market.
Okay.
Luke?
Uh, I, I agree with Jimmy on that, and also just thank you, um, brought a big smile to my face to hear that we're by November thirty, if we're gonna be up to speed with our audits. This is so far coming, and I'm just knocking on wood and appreciate you, Ron and Mr. Kamali. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I will say, yeah, brief us and, um, we will decide whether or not you'll, you'll come back to mayor and council, and depending what information's in front of us, we'll make the decision then. But go ahead, Kamali will be able to brief us and figure out what the plan is. Um, but it's definitely good to also have those conversations, um, in the public, so they know what, where the money's at. Okay, um, regarding the audits, it's been a headache, um, of many councils back, uh, you know, for what feels like ten years back, um, at least now more, I mean, maybe fifteen years back, to try to get this audits on time. Um, so it's good to know that we might be able to finally hit the mark, because trying to get those, uh, extensions upon extensions upon extensions, it's always been a headache, and it will give us a real timeframe of where our funding is and where our money is, and thank you for explaining the whole ARPA, because I think people automatically assume it's like cash, like value, and if it's not spent, you need to return it, and that needs to be accounted for. They give us the timeframe to be able to do that. So that's something to take into account, especially as the city has a lot of grants, and I think part of like, um, the reason why we've been able to save quite a bit of money is cause we have gone after a lot of grants to be able to fulfill a lot of the things. So thank you, Kamali, and the whole team for making sure the grants have gone out to fulfill some of their obligations, and that has given us a little bit of a softer, um, softer landing. Um, yeah, keep us posted when it comes to like hopefully making those audits across. Um, question for you, you say you're done with this part? You're done completely with your presentation, Ron?
Uh, I'm, I'm done with my presentation, uh, unless anybody has any questions.
I do have a question. Where does the safe, the, uh, money from the speed camera, where is it at?
Uh, that money, uh, is being deposited into the receivables account with Truist. Uh, and then every day, that money is swept out of the receivables account and into the main general fund account, uh, with Truist. And that's what we do with all of our sources of revenue.
So, okay, so what I wasn't clear on was there used to be an account where they used to move from so after, you know, receivable, I, I don't know if it went to general and then to that extra account. So what ended up happening? What was the change made?
Um, it was originally, well, I guess it was the first time that we, we did the speed cameras. We were depositing that money into, uh, the MLGIP account, the, the second MLGIP account. Um, and then we'll be started up with speed cameras again. There wasn't really a decision to do that, but it just kind of started, because that's the way it had been done before. And then after, um, we reviewed what was happening with that money, uh, we made the change to treat the speed camera money just like all of our other revenue. And the reason why we use a, a sweep account is for, uh, safety. Um, uh, anytime you have a bank account whose account number is, uh, is known outside of the organization, then that bank account becomes vulnerable to fraud. Uh, so what we do, uh, for both payables, well, payables, receivables and payroll, these are account numbers that would be known by people outside the, the organization. Uh, we use the sweep accounts. At the end of the day, there's no money in them. Uh, so there can't be any money that is taken fraudulently. And that's why we use sweep accounts.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, at least for me, I know in the past best practice has been to put the money separately, cause it has very limited usage, um. And I was, like, you see how you have the mayor liabilities against cash in this list? If for the future, if you guys could also add that line on it, it definitely will help, so that way I could also visually see what it looks like when it comes to that account.
Sure. Well, we, we can certainly, i- if, at any future meeting that, that the council would like, we can have a discussion about, uh, uh, restrictions on funds um, and the different levels of restrictions and how we account for them. Um, so i- if that's what you would like, just, uh, let me and Mr. Kamali know, and, and we'll put a presentation together for you.
Thank you. So at least for me, if this, um, report could be updated, where it says mayor liability against cash to add the cam, the speed camera on it, so we know what it looks like, um, that will also allow us to visually see as mayor and council, like, um, what the money looks like separate from that account, even if it's like on paper. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ron. And, uh, time is up, and, um, I'm gonna ask for more time, cause I need to ask if the community has any questions. So, um, can I have three minutes on the clock?
So moved.
Thank you, guys. Um, any objection, discussion? Nope, here none, three more minutes on the clock. So at this time, um, we are gonna open the floor to any member of the community, if they have a question regarding, um, the audits, bank information, our, our, our cash at hand, uh, to please go ahead and ask it, um, type your name on the, on the chat, or send us a message on Facebook. Jared, anything on Facebook? Thank you. And Ophelia, I'll send you, uh, uh, an email regarding your question. This is not on the agenda. Okay, seeing that there's nobody in the chat to have a question on Facebook, um, council, do you have anything else to add? Or do you wanna move to the next, um, to the next item?
Let's move.
Thank you, Jimmy, Luke. I'm assuming this move, Valerie, Jared?
Yeah, let's move.
Jared?
Move on, move on.
Perfect. Thank you, Valerie, Jared, as well, Luke and Jimmy. Okay, Ron, thank you so much, and have a good night, okay?
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, moving on to item number six. Thank you, Melissa. I'm like already losing my poor little vision. Um, updating discussion on thirty-two hundred Island project. Uh, mayor and council receiving an update from Mr. Hopkins, director of development, and Ms. Ferufino, director of co-compliance. Next time, we need to move these things on the list that were really low. Um, go ahead, the floor is, um, the floor is yours. Who's here?
Mayor, uh, can I just, I'll let you know that Mr. Hopkins is attending a conference in Alamo City. So I'm gonna give you an update, and Alma is here. She can weigh in too. So.
Go ahead, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, um, Mr. Hopkins has attempted few times by email, by phone, to reach out to Mr. Fati, the I, IGF, you know, group. Unfortunately, they're not responding to him. So we have decided to go and move forward with the vacant, you know, property tax on that property. So I asked Alma to, you know, contact the county and make sure that this property is gonna be on the list. So I have Alma over here, and if you guys need more information, Alma can, you know, provide more information. But unfortunately, we haven't heard anything from Mr. Fati or IGF, you know, group. And if you have any question, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you so much. And to also, um, notify that, you know, to make it clear, uh, so process has been already started, they've already been added to the list. And if for people that don't know this, uh, the city has a vacancy list, uh, where you get taxed two dollars and fifty cents for a hundred square foot assessed. Luke, you might be able to like clean that up a little bit more for me. Uh, so, you know, we give people about two years to knock it on the list and try to work with them, and if the location's still vacant, um, they are added to, to the list. So warnings have been, um, given, advice, coaching. I think we all have been like emailed on, on those as well, so, um, now they are in the list, and basically, the only way you could get out now is like for things to, to happen and very rapidly. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Kamali. I'm gonna open it out to the council to see if they have any questions for, um, for you or for, um, Director Ferufino. All right, so council, um, let me go with Ward Two since it's in your property. Valerie, Jared, uh, Luke and Jimmy?
Um, well, thank you for the update. Um, it's really unfortunate that this has come to this at this point. I mean, it's, it's had such promise as a, as a potential, like, first entrance to the city. Um, so, I mean, I don't know if there's anything else we can be doing to kind of lure them back in to, to continue the process of building, or, you know, I mean, I don't know, it just seems like this is such a like a, like a bad, it's, it's bad for our city, the, the front, the entrance to the city is, is kind of a vacant hole right now still, um, after all this time, so. Um, I look forward to hearing for, from you guys about any strategies you might have to bring them back to the table after this tax comes in, um, and things like that. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Valerie. Um, uh, Jared?
Yep, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Kamali, uh, and then, um, you know, to Ron for helping put this together and for the work on it, and Alma as well, and I agree with, uh, Valerie, it's unfortunate that this is where we are. Um, you know, I, I appreciate you all moving forward with the process as, um, our, our process to impose the vacant property tax, which I hope will, you know, I hope will serve, um, you know, as some sort of incentive to start to take some action. I don't know what that action would be. Um, but, you know, moving, moving more quickly, um, you know, what, whatever, and I know it's a li- a little unclear why, um, why things have been kinda come to a, come to a standstill, um, you know, and I would comment if there's any other opportunities, you know, to engage others and kind of providing pressure in addition to the city. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know if there's, you know, looping in county or other folks is, is, is helpful. Um, you know, I know this is important to, it's certainly important to the city. I know this has been a, a project that's kind of, since I moved here in twenty-ten, is, we're always hoping something's gonna happen um, to kind of create a gateway to the city, and I know this is very important to Prince George's County as well. I mean, it's one of the first, um, you know, one of the first properties, one of the first, um, it is the gateway uh, one of the major corridors into Prince George's County, especially on the corridor that's redeveloping rapidly. So, um, thank you for your work on this. I know it's, you know, we have limited tools, um, to address what's happening here, and would welcome any, um, any ideas and any other thoughts you all have on the levers we could use on this, um, um, with this property and this developer. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared. Um, I think it was Luke and Jimmy.
Yeah, um, thank you for the update, um, Alma and Mr. Kamali. Um, I, you know, my recommendation would be to just, you know, Mr. Kamali, maybe we should, we can ask, maybe we can direct Ron to figure out a plan, um, either try to talk to them, figure out what their plan is, and if not, have like a plan B for doing what Jared mentioned, putting pressure from other um, angles, maybe from the county, and, and maybe Ron could come up with that plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Luke, Jimmy.
Well, I, I think unfortunately, there's a good chance that this guy's just sitting on it until the prices goes up. I'm not sure, there's a lot you can, we can do, especially since he's on that, um, you know, another country. But I think, uh, maybe Alma, but there seem to be other violations, like they have cars in the street and, and, uh, are there other violations we should be citing them for? I mean, we should just cite them for everything we can and make it uncomfortable for them. And I was Alma still on the phone, uh, Alma here?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, mayor and council and residents. Um, so we have, um, followed all, you know, protocols when it comes to making sure that, um, the property owner is keeping up with the, with the property maintenance. So, um, Inspector Ugg has done a lot of, um, you know, things when it comes to making sure that, um, it's, the property's being kept. So in order for, for us to move forward, um, we definitely had to do, um, certain things like going to court, court and, um, you know, summoning the owner to court in this situation. Um, we have, um, received, um, from the Um we have um received um from the courts actually abatements on this property. So there are things um in line right now from code compliance that are coming through. Um so hopefully, this is something like uh that's gonna give the the property owner, I guess, a push to come forward and and probably try to do something with the property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. And and Jimmy, to your point, if paying about two or three times what tax is per a hundred square of of value asset is not gonna motivate them. I don't know what's gonna motivate them, but the build difference is significant. It's not like a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars more. It's a lot more money. I remember like there was an email that was sent to us back um back that more or less estimated what the property will be um with the two-fifty tax. So it's gonna be a rude awakening. Um if they're just sitting thinking it's not, it's only gonna be an investment that's gonna cost them nothing. Yeah, they're they're definitely very quickly gonna relax. That's my case. The other thing to point out is like um, but you know, members of our team I make themselves available even uh when um when the conver- when we had the conversation uh with him, I know Jimmy, you were there, I believe Jared was also there that day. Um with uh Fatty, when it came to like support or talking to the county and 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 basically um working through the process even with the city and with the county, right? So the city has made themselves available if they need help, right? Assistant, support um to connect. So um we also have sent like a um warning emails, um advising emails, right? To try to make it, because we understand it's like a very interesting situation with the whole COVID thing. But at this point, we're already like at our line of um giving warnings, if that's what we wanna call it. But uh thank you on Kamali Hopkins and Ferrufino for the work on this and following through. And with uh the core order, that also means that um it's gonna be looking um a little bit cleaner. Um then then it's looking right now. So at least that, at least it's one small part of it. Okay, uh council, anything, anything else before I open it to the public?
Yeah, I had a quick question.
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, a- approximately like with two fif- sorry if I, you guys have sent this before, for uh the vacant property tax rate of uh two, two-fifty? Um what what is that? What does that make the property's annual tax bill right now? Do you do you know off the top of your head? And I apologize for putting you on the spot if I, if you don't have it.
No, we have to look into it. Alma, do you have an answer for that?
No, sir.
Okay, no worries.
We can, we can get back to you. We can provide that information.
Yeah, no, that's totally fine. Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
It is significantly, Jared. It's not like a thousand, two thousand, five thousand.
Yeah, a big number.
It's a, it's a lot. So um so you're almost doubling or tripling what it what it is right now for a hundred square footage. So you're talking about like, it's not even a hundred thousand. I believe it's even bigger than that. So it's not like a a tapping your hand. It's a little bit bigger than that.
Okay, that will, that that is, okay, that helps for context. Thank you.
At least it could be a deterrent.
All right, perfect. Thank you. And Mr. Kamali, if you, I need to either, you know, if you could find that email, I'll put that information together for us and send it our way. We definitely appreciate it. I I would like you to do the math.
You mean, you mean the email from Mr. Hopkins to?
How much is it gonna cost? How much will?
Okay, okay, I got you.
Yeah, he 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 knows what I'm talking about, right, Mr. Kamali? So he could send it to us, but you don't have to send it this second, Mr. Kamali. But send it to us like, you know, um, you know, because I'm not gonna try to do math in the in the spot or find that email. All right, perfect. So I'm gonna open it up to the public.
Residents, if you're still awake with us, um do you guys have um, is this anybody on Facebook or on the chat has any comments regarding thirty-two-hundred Island Avenue project? Um anything on Facebook, uh Jared? Thank you. And nothing on the chat. And um regarding the county, I'm already having um, I already um I'm flagging the the our, you know, our our people in the county to let them know, our county council members to let them know um, you know, because they obviously have seen us. They come and visit us for the events and they noticed that it hasn't moved. So they they are aware that it is not moving, okay? Both um, you know, our our center and also our our county council member. So they are aware. They they had questions. All right, perfect. Seeing that there is none, council, if there's nothing else to add, I'm gonna move on to the next item, item number seven. Discussion of Appointment of the Police Advisory Board. Mayor and Council will have discussion on the appointment of Police Advisory Board. Um Melissa, can you put up that page, please? So in the meantime, as you guys saw, our legislation was um was written what it feels like a century ago um from the previous council. Uh Jimmy, make sure that we follow through with it and um and we worked on it and it was passed. Um, this is what we have so far. Um the advisory board does states that um the application does say that it has to be uh two from Ward One, two from Ward Two, and the apartments. Um but I'm not sure if, I think it also stated that the person could not be part of any other committee. I have to double check that. All right, uh so council, you have um the names here. As you can tell, we are short um. We we are short members for Ward One. Um so you guys need to make this, you know, uh this, you guys don't have to vote on who you guys would like to see. Uh I think that uh we need to go through the resumes and figure out what what is it, does it looks like right now, what we're thinking. Uh number one and number two, um also make a decision, put another call out uh because as it stands, um Ward One will be sure um will be definitely sure a person. Um, okay. All right, so I'm gonna start with you, Jimmy, since you worked on this resolution. Go ahead.
Well, I I think we should uh move on uh at the next meeting, making the appointments. Uh and we'll have one vacancy and we'll continue to do that. I don't, you know, so I would, you know, that we have one from Ward One, we have one from the apartments, and there are three applicants from uh Ward Two. And, you know, two of them should be nominated. I said I'd volunteer to be liaison. I talked to the chief. And, you know, I mean, he's he's excited about this being a kind of a committee where he can explain community uh community policing to the community and get some feedback. So I, you know, I'd suggest that we move it to the legislative agenda and make the appointments. And obviously, there'll be one vacancy, but we'll still have four people and to get it moving.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Uh gonna stick with Ward One. Uh Luke?
I'm good with that. Thanks.
Jared?
I'm good with that, too.
Valerie?
Yeah, I think I think um moving this to a legislative session and then having one vacancy is okay. Um I think that's fine.
So I'm not comfortable having Ward One with just one vote. Um. I will say that even if we move it to legislative session, I I was for us to um put a notice out, you know, tomorrow, Mr. Kamali, if possible, or this week. Um doing a call up if people from Ward One would like to join this advisory board. So that way um we have, we are working on recruiting that extra person. Uh because as it stands, you have three members of Ward Two and only one member of Ward One. So representation wise, this is not very, looking very good. You know, um especially when it comes like three votes versus one. And originally, you know, it was done as an advisory, but that what we could hear from both wars equally. So we could move it forward, but I will say like um, Mr. Kamali, can you please move forward to like putting an announcement out uh that we need, we're looking for one? At least one for Ward One, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that at least that's my compromise to you guys, because I definitely don't feel comfortable uh being being, if if the apartment person was from Ward One, at least I will say like this, two were one and two, two and two. But right now, it's um, it's um, it's gonna be three to one. And um I need to make sure that we're fair for both wars.
I I mean, being from Ward One, these are citywide issues and I'm not sure. I mean, I I'm asking, I'm I'm gonna ask if you're on legislative agenda. We should get uh somebody on it and we should can, you know, do it. But we shouldn't stop us implementing this because we don't have another person.
I didn't think, to be clear, I said we could move it to legislation, but I need to make sure that the announcement's gonna go out this week.
I agree a hundred percent.
You know, because I do have, I do have, it might mean citywide issues, but that'd be equivalent of having um, you know, everybody from Ward Two sitting on council. It might be Ward One issues, but you know, Ward Two issues, you know, or citywide, but the reality is like, that's the reason why it was originally created that way. So that way, it also addresses the issues for Ward One um where one has. Um and and at this point, you know, it 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 doesn't, um doesn't mean it's like hopefully, like somebody from Ward One from the big apartment buildings is is there. Um because um nobody from the big multi- multi-complex buildings is even in the list. Uh that's something that um that also concerns, there's nobody from um, you know, uh Cave Wood or Queenstown or Queens Manor. Those are the big apartment buildings, not even Newton Square, you know, so that's something that maybe, you know, we need to send out and saying, hey, anybody like, at least for Ward One would be like Newton Square and um and Queenstown um to see if anybody else from there wanted. So I'm gonna see if I send a message off, anybody's even interested. So we could have at least some med- mediation, um at least some equality on 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 equity will be the right word on it, okay? Uh Mr. Kamali, can also make sure our city clerk also send us the resumes if she hasn't already done so, so that we could start like looking at them.
Will do that.
Thank you. All right, anything else on this topic, uh council? Okay, I'm gonna open it out to the community. Anybody from the community would like to say something? Jared, can you check if there's anything on um on Facebook? And I see, I see we still have one community member holding on with us on the chat, so let us know um if you need to say something, okay? All right, perfect. Thank you, Jared. And I'm seeing nothing on the chat, so we're gonna move on to the next um, to the next item, item number eight. Discussion on the throne uh bathroom. Mayor and Council will have a discussion on the throne bathroom. All right, um who put this on the agenda?
Uh I may have, because we got an email from the uh from the uh, I I have a mail, I have a proposal on this. So what the last uh message we got was that they were going to have uh the throne at uh at the nature center for uh the uh safety day. And then they were gonna bring an another throne and there was, there were no commitment that they were gonna have this uh a hundred percent. So they may at some point take it away. Uh and at some point, they wanted to uh bill us, or not bill us, that we have to pay for it. So what I'd like to suggest is that uh that, you know, that's, you know, we we like, it's been good having it, it's my perspective. And if, you know, but you know, we can't make this a permanent thing, especially in terms of it not being handicapped. Uh and that, you know, if they, you know, if they take it away for now. You know, it's been a nice trial and then we could address it later when they have a, when it's handicap accessible, about whether we want a budget money for that. So I just thought we should have some discussion where we're gonna go in that. So my suggestion is, A, you know, we we appreciate what they're doing. They wanna, you know, they have to take it away, that's fine. Uh but that we can't really uh afford it. And we don't even wanna do it until they have a handicap accessible one, then we bring it back to discuss whether we wanna uh pay for that or not.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. Luke?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been close to this issue. Um so um I'll just pause and wait for everybody else to give their opinion.
Jared?
Yeah, I um, yeah, thanks, Jimmy, for bringing this up. Um yeah, I think it's been a, it's been a great asset for the city. You know, in terms of downtown, I don't know, Womata's bus operators liked it. Um I think, you know, because we've, we've been able to do a pilot where they've essentially provisioned it for free. Uh, you know, we've been able to kind of trial it without uh, I I guess, the ADA issue. Um I, you know, if we're gonna have a permanent publicly accessible bathroom, it needs to be ADA accessible. And that's not a preference, that's a, should be a regulatory requirement. So um, you know, I'm a I I I'm certainly of the, you know, the, at which point, you know, they pull the, I guess, the free pilot out, you know, I think we tell them we're certainly interested in revisiting it at a point where um they've produced an ADA accessible bathroom. Um, you know, there may be a um a scenario, and I I know they've um you know, they've, they've uh been talking to Womata, who uh who kind of found, you know, found out and was interested in the solution for its bus operators. There may be a, you know, there may be some question if like Womata is willing, you know, e- ends up provisioning this for bus operators and potentially would be able to provision it for the public. Although I do not think from an ADA perspective, they'd be able to do that either. So, you know, I, even if Womata were willing to pay for it, um, you know, you can, you can have the current setup. It works because uh there's a you know, exception for ADA, if you're a driver that has to, you know, that that, you know, the certain, certain requirements, you have to have to be able to be a bus driver. Uh that would make the employee limited restroom, okay? Um but I I I don't think, I I can't, I can't see a pathway right now to, until there's an ADA accessible version of this to us being able to move forward with um, you know, some sort of uh publicly provisioned by the city. So but I I appreciate, you know, what we're doing here. I really wanna say that. Um I know I've, you know, certainly gotten feedback from folks on it. I've gotten feedback from, you know, bus driver, right? I I've used it myself a couple of times, um, you know, ru- running and taking, running uh later, later at night. Um and gotten a few good feedback from bus drivers and people walking in and out of it. So I think it, you know, certainly has been an asset. Um, you know, we'd like to see what our next steps could be. Thanks.
Thank you, Jared. Valerie?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um I think it's been a pretty successful pilot um trial. Um I agree that, you know, if we're going to go forward with it, it has to be ADA compliant. Um but yeah, I think, I think it's been a success so far, so thank you.
Um. I think we all agree that it's been a success and there's limitations on why the city can and cannot get it. The reality is, even if we keep this one and get a regular restroom that's ADA, we're not gonna be able to maintain it. We're not gonna be able to keep it safe. And it's gonna be a disaster less like it's been in the past. And the reality is like, our team is not gonna be able to do neither. We have a very tiny public works team for us to be like, let's get an ADA restroom to um be able to have both, right? So that basically disqualifies um that that even being able to do, right? Um I I definitely wanna make sure we do not get uh lost in the message. Right now, it's a pilot. Uh they are gonna move it to um Nature Center for the Safety Night Out on Friday. And then they're gonna replace the currently one that they have um in their, even on, currently under even this extension of the pilot, right? Um the art-friendly one, um the art mirror one. And um so for the community members, to be clear, it will, they're gonna have it there, they're gonna place it there. But moving forward does not mean that necessarily it's gonna be in that location. If they need it for somewhere else, they'll just remove it and go somewhere else. So I definitely think we need to talk to um the the throne team to figure out how balanced is right now their um ADA compliance restroom, how far they are, because I know they're working on it. Um and definitely, uh they had mentioned that, you know, once they have that ready, they're, they're also happy to give it a trial, like, you know, in in our parking space, right? So um we definitely I need to have the conversations to figure out where they're at with the ADA compliance. We are still gonna be falling into a pilot program where they're providing, we're providing the space for them um to have this restroom there. Uh the city is not gonna be able to pay anything at this point because of it. And if we still have any doubts or questions, you know, we definitely will get leave of eyes to to be able to talk to us, to figure out what can and and we cannot do, right? But I think the ADA compliance part is um was stopping us at this point uh from doing it. So um I I I think that at this point, it's like we're just, you know, basically saying the same thing. Um so I guess a direction to um to Mr. Kamali is like at this point, because it's not ADA compliance, we won't be able to like um you know, pay for like, you know, the service for our you know, pay for like, you know, the service for a year and, you know, they, they're welcome to continue utilizing the space as part of the pilot program, um, um, and bring the new restroom. And we fully understand that that also means that if they needed to like lift it within twenty-four hours and, or not bring another one, it is something that we're fully aware. Okay, Mr. Kamali, we're, we're clear?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Just add one question, maybe something that.
Well done. I just, I wanted, Mr. Kamali had the floor and then I'll go to you, Jimmy. Go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Yeah, I've been in communication with Jessica and they're gonna, as, as you mentioned it, and Jimmy, they're gonna move it to nature center and bring another one for another two weeks. And then she said they're working on the ADA and whenever they get it, you know, we can continue that conversation again.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Okay, Jimmy, go ahead.
Maybe, Mr. Kamali, I, the question about maintenance, even if we pay, will they maintain it? I thought they would or not. I, I'm not sure what they, they're.
No, they're gonna maintain it. If we pay the fee, the monthly fee, then the throne people gonna, you know, take care of it.
Now, Jimmy, I was referring about like, if we were to per, if, if we were to rent an ADA compliance restroom from a different company, not them.
Okay.
We won't be able to maintain it, because you know, one of the reasons they like, you guys do the pilot program, be like, do this one and also get an ADA compliance from a regular, not, not the fancy one that we have, right? Like a regular company would for an event. And I said, the problem is, is like, we won't be able to maintain it either safe or clean. And that's the reality of it. And I don't want us to fall into having a problem where our team cannot maintain ours, you know, we're not gonna have an officer outside the restroom to take care of this. So become more like a safety and, uh, and both a health issue and a safety issue. And I don't think we need to be putting our stuff in, in, in with that.
But if we do it through them, they'll maintain it.
Yes, correct. The, the same, basically the.
On the same page.
I don't know what the price would look like if that, if that even changes or what the speculations are when it comes to the ADA compliance, but my understanding is, and Mr. Kamali, I think he also mentioned it, that everything will basically like the cleaning, the maintaining, the, you know, all that stuff will stay this, will stay the same. They're responsible for that. Okay, so, Mr. Kamali, um, I think we were clear. Thank you for having the conversation with, um, with the team from Throne and, and keep us posted. At least we know for the next two weeks, the new one is gonna be there and.
Sure, will do.
Just please let us know, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, perfect. Um, members of the community, anything on this point? Anything on Facebook? All right, we do have a message from Jack, um, Mercivier, ADA compliance makes total sense. But stayed on just to chime a resident perspective that I'm, I'm a big fan of freely available public restrooms and hope there's a way to continue in ADA version of it, and that's a good use of city funds. Uh, thank you, Jack, so much. Yeah, I think we all, we all agree, we're eagerly waiting for the compliance one. Uh, because it has been very positive, uh, for Latino Heritage, um, festival that we have various resident, um, start using it. And they, they spoke about how, how nice it was for them to use it and how safer they felt. And also when they were coming in and bringing the kids, right, they felt like it was, you know, they were not, the kids were not afraid of the restroom. So they, I, it got really positive feedback even in the event. So we, I think that you hear completely from the rest of Mayor Council that we a hundred percent agree with you. We're really waiting for it. All right, thank you so much. And thank you for staying us, with us this late. It's appreciated. All right, moving on to item number nine, ARPA discussion and update number twenty. Uh, Mayor Council will discuss the status of projects and reallocation of funds. Um, it, anything to add on this one, everyone?
Well.
Go ahead.
So I mean, is that for me? So one, one thing, uh, I mean, one, one thing I raised was the issue that we were bringing up at the, let's say, meeting about the reallocation of the monies for the city ma- uh, for the project manager back to the ARPA fund. So, and then I don't think we're ready to have a full discussion. I mean, maybe Mr. Kamali or somebody could come up with some proposals. I mean, seems to me, looking at there was seven hundred thousand left that not left being seven hundred thousand hasn't been allocated. And if we add the three hundred thousand dollars to the program, for the program manager, that's, that's a million dollars. And that maybe we should come up, maybe the next work session with some ideas of whether we should save some of that money for the implementation of the tool design proposals or something like that, that we kind of look at that. I'm not suggesting, I think we should save half of the money for other things, but maybe look for some like, uh, I think the big issue is, you know, kind of implementing the streets and the, uh, the tool design. But if we don't have a proposal there yet, maybe it could be a work session, maybe somebody could, Mr. Kamali, someone could come up with some proposals. But I'm suggesting the legislative session, we at least reallocate this three hundred thousand back to, uh, unallocated. That's what I'm, that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. Luke?
Yeah, I would be good with that. Um, you know, maybe Mr. Kamali can take the last document I circulated and kind of go through it and let us know where, because I know we got grant money and in some locations, we sort of put a hold on things pending grant money. Like for Richardson Park and others, and maybe, um, for the legislative session, we can come back and have information about what, what line items, for lack of a better term, can be changed and what money can be, um, go back to being unallocated, like the program manager position. Um, and there might be others, so that I, I, I support that for the legislative session.
Uh, can we move it to the work session, since there's no urgency, um, on it, because the street? Yeah, so that way, like, you know, because legislators to vote on it, I think we need to, uh, the, the idea was to have Mr. Kamali present, so he'll have some time. He could present this in October and November. Um, at this point, like, we don't need one unless Mr. Kamali tells us, like, you know, that he needs some money allocated there. But anything else that's pre-allocated right now, um, there's technically no, no urgency to move anything, um, at this point also. So I just wanna make sure that we, we take time to, to look into it, because most of our money except for this last million will be, um, hasn't been allocated yet. All right, um, Valerie, Jared?
Um, thank you, yes. Um, so I know at the last two, two or three meetings ago, um, we talked about possibly creating a home repair program, um, or something like that, um, for homeowners. Um, and so just as an FYI, I have been working on drafting a proposal, um, and I will circulate that to folks, um, for using some ARPA funds for that, um, program or projects. So just a.
Thank you so much, Jared.
Yeah, and, uh, Selena, we talked at some point about trying to do an extension of the county rain check program. I've, uh, been talking, um, with, uh, folks at CB Trust about what that could look like and, um, we'll circulate that when I can get something together. There's, um, there, there is a little bit of a wrinkle. We wanna make sure that putting our own program doesn't, uh, remove the ability of residents to take advantage of the county one. Uh, which there are some iterations, some design, program designs, uh, that will do that. Uh, that's been the outcome of College Park and Bowie. Putting programs together of their own. Uh, so I wanna make sure we, you know, we supplement, not replace a county, county program. So just wanted to flag that for you. Thank you.
A hundred percent. The county has bigger pockets than we do anyways. Our, our little tiny, a little tiny drop of the bucket is should not disqualify them for.
Way bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other thing is like, I will tell you guys regarding Richardson Park, I'm not touching that money. Um, mainly because parks are very expensive. I, I learned that through, um, through my presentation. Good lord. Men and if it's very expensive, so a hundred six should be able to cover most of it. Uh, but if we're re- trying to redesign like, you know, Richardson Park, this is our only park. And this might be one of the, one of the few chances that we're able to have like, you know, this much money to be able to do it. Make it like, you know, uh, because we're thinking of doing the, the fence and everything else, right, to make it ADA, uh, safer. I know some of our residents were raising the question to make sure some of our parks will have, um, fence. Um, so it will stay for, for some of the, of, of their kids, um, that are not able uh, for their safety or for smaller kids that they run in and out of the park, right? Uh, what it looks like. Uh, but, um, yeah, so I think like, let's, let's, um, let's look into it and, um, I think October or November looks good, um, to like reassess, so that would give us time to be able to, um, figure out what some wrinkles look like, um, in the various projects that we're mentioning, um, because that was one of the challenges that we did face, figure out like, how our programs did not override like another program, um, and then it's gonna be hard for us to try to get back into the program. In this case, like rain checks, um, and also I will say the same thing for, um, Valerie, double check that anything that we do with home repairs does not affect any, any other program that there's out there that will knock it out. But I think it's definitely a great initiative. All right, um, and Mr. Kamali, uh, let us also know, uh, when it comes to the, um, the grant manager, if you need any funding for that, um, or if you wanna leave some funding, uh, aside, now maybe not a three hundred thousand, but if you wanna put some money aside, all the money for that, um, also let us know as well, okay? Because I know that also like, it finishes out in the next, you know, um, you can only spend it up to certain year, you still have an extension to work on certain projects that have not been finished, as long as you have like assigned them for a little bit longer. So I know we thought, we thought, we talked about three years, but the funding cost of the use, um, I think is two years even after. So that's something to, to do keep in mind. And I don't want us to like drain completely that account and then, then we're down to the last penny spent and we're trying to find, um, that extra help that we might need. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Kamali. All right, um, okay, perfect, um, and, um, all right, so anything from our, anything from the community on this one? Uh, Facebook, uh, Jared? And on the chat? We're good, Jack? Okay, Jack will let us, will let us know. I think we're good so far. All right, perfect. Uh, thank you guys and thank you for putting in the agenda. Uh, moving on to item number ten. Discussion on the timeline to have in-person council meetings. The Mayor Council have discussion on the timeline to have in-person council meetings. I know you added this to the agenda, Jimmy. Go ahead.
I just, I mean, people, uh, ask me about it. I just think we should just kind of, I'm not pushing it. I just think at some point we should decide whether, you know, some people wanna come back and have in-person meetings. If people, my neighbor, uh, you know, doesn't use computers and, you know, and, you know, she wants to go to meeting and she asked and I said, we would discuss it. I don't know if it's now September, if we should go back to in-person meetings starting in November, or maybe have the legislative meeting in person and not a work session or something. I mean, I think, I, I'm not sure what other cities are doing. I was wondering about that.
Uh, Luke?
Um, I'm open to, to going back in person, um, maybe starting with the legislative sessions. Um, but I'm also open to hearing what other people have to say. Um, obviously with two kids, it makes it kind of easy to just go upstairs for a city council meeting, but, um, you know, being in person, I think would be nice. I think it'd be nice to kind of be with you all. Um, kind of forces you to pay attention better in some instances. So, um, uh, you know, that could be helpful, um, and might be good for us. So I'm, I'm, I'm open to coming back.
Uh, Jared and Valerie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly open as, as well. Um, you know, I, and I, and I hear Jimmy, your, you know, folks feedback on wanting to come in in person. I, I do kinda, and I, I'd like to hear what other cities are doing on this, um, for a couple reasons. And one of them is that I, I know for a lot of folks, being able to show up, um, you know, for some folks, um, coming in and, you know, they, they have the time, the bandwidth to come into city council meeting. Uh, for other folks, it's, um, you know, it, it, joining, be able to join virtually and, and do it from home has, uh, has added a lot of, um, you know, has added a lot of, uh, uh, flexibility for them. And I, I, you know, and I don't know the answer here, because I've only been on council when we've been virtual, but I, I have to, I have to imagine that, you know, in some ways, we're getting, we're getting some, you know, like, s- better participation or more participation than we would be if we had an in-person meeting. Uh, and I, I know the, the complexity of doing hybrid, or, I mean, they're, they're challenging and that would almost seem like ideal to me, but I, I know there's some challenges in figuring it out and how that works. So, um, you know, and the other thing was, um, you know, I, I typically, we don't have very, very large turnouts, but our council chambers are relatively small. And I was just thinking about this last night when we had the, uh, streets and sidewalks plan. Um, you know, I don't know how we could have done that uh, with that many people at City Hall or some other places, right? Um, so that's, that's just my thoughts that are running through my head. I, you know, defer to my more experienced colleagues, um, Luke, uh, and Selena, and then, you know, Jimmy, I mean, you've done a, done a round on city council before this one. So, would, would love everyone's feedback on this. Uh, that's all. Thank you.
Valerie?
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, it's good to get back into person. I think, um, it probably makes sense to wait a little bit until, you know, maybe like, you know, start in the new year, the new calendar year, the new fiscal year, something like that, to make it like a prominent, like this is where we're starting. You know, up in person again, so people can pay attention, or set some kind of date, like this is when we're gonna start. Um, I know other cities do virtual and, um, in person. Um, I don't know if we have the capabilities to do that, but that would be a way to capture both audiences, if we can. Um, but I'm happy to go back in person. But I would just, I would just suggest instead of doing it like next week, like set a plan for when we're gonna do it and then announce it, so people know that we're making the change. But, thank you.
Thank you so much. So, um, our, our chambers are small. And unlike other cities, like let's say Heightsville or Greenville, that I've been doing virtual meetings for PG CMA or like the other committees we're on, they have a full electronics set to be able to do like virtual and stuff like that. The time that we tried it, um, we had it to have the screen down, uh, we had it to be sitting in the tables, they had a tub, a camera on top of some other desk. So it's a lot of limitations for us to do it. And we definitely, I do think we need to go hybrid, um, between both. Are we ready to start like in two weeks? Absolutely not. Um, I, I do, we'll side with, uh, Valerie that we need to like put a plan together and then be able to see what it looks like. Um, winter is coming very quickly, very fast, and the time of, uh, the time of hour is gonna change the dark very quickly. And I say that because that also means that, um, with that comes a lot of colds and flus. And the way we are positioned right now to be, our chairs are relatively ridiculously close to one another. We always had that issue where basically one moves and we keep hitting each other with the chairs. So chances are, we're gonna have to do the four tables. And if we do the four tables to accommodate, um, council and city manager and the, and the, and clerk and the staff, that means that we might be able to have, um, one or two people in chambers with us. Because they're gonna have to be sitting around where, um, HR is at. Um, because that's gonna be like, you know, some thinking like one or two chairs. So that's also to take into consideration that even sitting, when we go back, um, it might be limited, um, to try to get people in, even with the space that we have. So, yes, to creating a plan, um, we could do ferry if you guys want, as we only have like before, um, the big winter hits, is what? October, November, um, in October, you're already seeing the big, uh, change. So let's figure, um, so this will also give, um, time for our team, uh, Mr. Kamali, uh, start working with communications to figure out what is it that they need, uh, to make sure it's hybrid. So we are realistic on what we're asking our team to do and what they can do to make sure this happens. Um, and even if we start coming in one meeting in, one minute out, um, that was so, but I definitely do feel like there's more people that join our meeting through virtual means that they haven't and even stayed this longer. So usually by this time, most people have walked out like an hour away. So yes, to a plan, um, Mr. Kamali, let us know, brief us on what is it that the team might need in case, um, this equipment that they need to purchase and what it will look like to be able to have a hybrid meeting. Uh, because I believe like, um, on the channels, you could do it with the cameras there in the roof and maybe Facebook, but not Zoom, um, or, you know, so that's the, the, the challenge that they had. But if you could give us the brief summary of what it is, Mr. Kamali, from your team? So we could have a better idea what it looks like, so we could make a better decision. Okay?
Yeah, can I just make a point here? I just wanna bring something to your attention, the renovation of Hotlum. We're gonna be so limited and there are some restrictions because the ramp, the wall, elevator, and I'm in a conversation with the architects, and we may even have to relocate city employee to Dr. Gupta's second floor. Because of the renovation activity and the dust, and that's gonna be a big issue. And they need to disconnect the AC for.
And they need to disconnect the AC for several months, and then the AC units is going to go on the roof, on the new roof. So I do appreciate if you guys let me, because I've been talking with, uh, architects and, uh, they're recommending that we may have to move. And that just came up last week and I was waiting, and I saw this item tonight, so I'm just, you know, bringing that one to your attention.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kamali, that definitely changes the changes the discussion, so right, if we are in person, we might have to meet in PD, MPD does not has the cameras in the ceiling. So your team will definitely have to, um, you will have to brief us on if we are meeting in, in the police department, uh, community room, what that will look like, uh, when it comes to be able to be either hybrid or in person, so, um, council members, I guess this is food for thought, we could bring it out to the work session, um, to, to the next work session to get, to get feedback, but, um, our staff is relocating from one space to the other, they're definitely going to need every single space that they need, um, in the city in the very limited space that we have in the city building. Oh my goodness, we didn't think about this, thank you, Mr. Kamali, all right, council, um, any thoughts, uh, from what you just heard?
One thought?
Go ahead, Jimmy?
Uh, well, first of all, I looked at the charter, and the charter just says meetings, it doesn't say in person. So gives us a little leeway, second thing, I think we should look at the option of, uh, the nature center, since it's a a big, you know, you know, you have a lot of space there, it might be easier to do, and, and especially what we're hearing in the future, and three, I know, uh, Mr. Kamali, someone could, or maybe, you know, ask other cities. So we have a sense of, you know, how many of the other cities in our town are doing it, so we have more food for thought on, on this stuff. But, uh, you know, I mean, we, obviously with the Pots Hall, we have to look at options for in the future meeting somewhere else, nature center seems to me, you know, a big place, so maybe that's a possibility, thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy, um, anybody else from council?
Yeah, I would.
Derek, Luke, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I would just say, I'm, I'm very hesitant going to a another location just because it forces staff to have to commute there, and I just am not a fan of that, I mean, depending on when the Pots Hall discussion starts, maybe we just keep virtual until that all gets done, I know that's going to be a long road to hoe, um, but I, I agree with what mayor said, and then Mr. Kamali can think about it and come back to us, so we can talk about it at the October work session again.
Thank you, Jared?
Yeah, no, I, um, I'm, I'm, I agree with Luke, I, I don't know if we're moving to a temporary location and like we're relocating equipment and staff like every two weeks. I, I, I just think that's, that creates a lot of additional work that it may be, may be unnecessary, um, and I, you know, I, I do, I do get the move to go back, I do also realize we're sort of in a very unique position with, um, both the size of our council chambers, which are really small relative to the size of our city, and I'm glad we're, we're addressing that, and, um, you know, also with the Pots Hall issue, Mr. Kamali, thank you for so much for bringing that up, um, because I, quite frankly, I didn't even think of that, and I, I'm glad you glad you, glad you brought up the impacts it's going to have and, and how, you know, you, you and staff are going to have, you know, be making quite a few adjustments in your working day, just to, you know, accommodate what is, you know, in the long term, a better thing for our city, but we, we need to make sure that that, what we're doing from a council perspective makes, uh, and meeting perspective makes sense in the, in the interim, so I, you know, uh, agree that, you know, if you have, you know, you and, and our staff can do some kind of research, what are other cities doing right now, um, how are they making it work, and you know, what makes sense for us and staff and the, the lift needed to accommodate if it's another location? And, you know, what, what could the timeline look, look like for, um, but I, I agree in some way, you know, Luke's point, I, it may make, it ma- I mean, just because of our unique situation, which, at the end of which, we're going to have this problem completely solved in terms of space, that it may make sense to um, stay virtual for, um, for the time being, and, and I would, you know, the long term, I think the hybrid option, I really, I do, I do get that it's important having folks in person, that folks want to come in, I, I do really think that, you know, the length of a lot of council meetings just by nature, it can make it more challenging for folks to participate, um, if they don't have an entirely free night. Every single time, there's an option, a thing they want to weigh in on, and for them to come to the city, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jared, Valerie?
I await more information, thank you.
Since Valerie's like, my plan exactly, right? Uh, yeah, so I also will tell you guys Tuesday, uh, that's when the explorers like, uh, you know, train in, um, in the police department, that's why they were there, um, last Tuesday and stuff like that, so I will hate to display, displace them during the winter. Um, but yeah, Mr. Kamali, um, give us more information and feedback on what it look like, and I have been at City Hall when there's no air conditioning. I don't wish it upon my worst enemy, you know, it is horrible. And same thing when like, you know, the heat is not working, we will not last there very long, I mean, unless we're like bundled up and like, you know, with face mags, hoodies, and I mean, so disastrous, it's happened, um, a couple of times through my, my time as, um, uh, when I was a council member, right, uh, oh yeah, it is, it, when it's cold, it is ridiculously cold. And when it's hot, it's hotter than even outside, so, um, yeah, no, there's no way we will be able to to host meetings, only that is very damaging to the equipment. Uh, we have had like, you know, equipment, uh, melted. That's how hard it was, uh, when there was, um, a power outage. And, um, it like completely like destroyed a lot of the equipment because it got so hot in the building. So, I think we're on agreement, Mr. Kamali, come, come back with us, uh, to us, uh, what, what time it looks like or what is needed, um. But regarding the nature center, we also have to realize that they rent that space. And, um, if, if we do go to the nature center, um, we will have to get like, uh, you know, potentially, uh, uh, maybe a year contract with them to be on the meetings, because the meetings will now always be held there. But the reality is like, it's going to be a lot for us to be able to mobilize the whole entire staff over there, um, every other week. That's what then, the, the, what's it called, the PD will be like, the, the middle, like, potential? Because at least it's like, they could leave the stuff there and secure. But the nature center, they'll have to move them back and forward and, um, and be able to meet the requirements of the nature center, which issues like cleanup after you leave, right, we have to mop and sweep and everything. So if our meetings are finishing at ten, ten thirty, like somebody's going to have to stay and do all that to be able to accommodate us there. But, um, Mr. Kamali, um, yeah, give us, uh, what it will look like, um, the timeline, um, and you know, at this point, we also need to be reasonable where, um, yeah, that's true, Valerie, the, the elementary schools are still not even open for, um, meetings, we had a, a virtual back-to-school night, so they're not even open, um, and yeah, the schools could be another option. Uh, thank you for that, so, um, I, I guess it's not something that's going to be solved in a month.
This one.
Spaces with us, okay, Mr. Kamali, go ahead.
Just, I mean, I, just I, I agree with what everybody's saying, I was just wondering if the next, let's say, meeting, we just have like a an announcement, or maybe the mayor could just say what we're looking at and the status of it, that we're looking into things, just so the public knows what we're looking into.
I, I'll give a report back in the legislative meeting, will that work?
That'd be perfect.
Yeah, and Mr. Kamali, we'll, we'll go ahead and work in that paragraph, okay? Um, it's going to be short, all right, thank you, um, um, members of the community, like member of that community. Um, if, um, is there anything you need to, you would like to comment on this item? Please let us know, anybody on Facebook, uh, Jared? I'm trying to do my D heart, so we know who's Jared we're talking about. All right, thank you so much, and I see nothing on the, nothing on the chat, and, and thank you for the suggestion, Valerie, um, the schools might be a good place to have them, all right. City clerk has, will be presenting the September sixth, twenty twenty-two legislative meeting minutes to mayor and council. Mayor and council, they are in your package, please take a look at them, and if you have anything to add, please submit to us, to our city clerk, so that way they could edit them and they could move over, um, for our legislation vote on our meeting, and, um, if there's nothing to add, change, or removed, um, they'll be presenting on the legislation for vote, okay? So please take a look at them, and if you guys could please, um, send it ideally by this Friday, so, um, Melissa has enough time to review them before the legislative session, okay? All right, Melissa, anything to add on that, or that's, that covers it?
That covers it, yeah.
Perfect, so moving on to item number twelve. You're like, finally, uh, discussion on the liquor control commission meeting that will be held on September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two about the liquor license, um, application, uh, for thirty-four oh nine Perry Street. So Jimmy, the floor, um, the floor is yours.
So I, we kind of discussed this a little bit at the preliminary meeting, uh, and since we can't make a decision, I just want to let people know, I, I plan to, uh, attend the meeting virtually and will say that it was some discussion and that the general sense of the councils, we would like them to come to the uh, liquor, and to come to council before they, from the, uh, license. That makes sense, I mean, since we can't actually order a decision, you know, that, you know, uh, you know, I, I think the problem with, you know, the, uh, the liquor uh, license is probably only that one of the few leverage points we have over a business to making sure they act, you know, in, in like a, a friendly neighborhood, you know? And, you know, I have nothing to think that they shouldn't, they won't. Uh, I know Jared and somebody else at the MUTC said it looked like they were putting some money into it, but, uh, you know, their uh, hours are until midnight, uh, and, you know, uh, it's called, it's a lounge, and I just think it'd be good if, you know, they made a presentation to council before, you know, that, you know, they get the liquor license, this is not holding them back, then that's right, usually liquor license is the last thing. This time they're doing a liquor license even before they built it out. And often when you get a liquor license, they can trade it to somebody else, and then we're stuck with, uh, somebody that's not a good neighbor with a liquor license.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy, uh, Jared, you are liaison to the MUTC, um, any feedback on this? You're muted, Jared?
Yeah, sorry about that, um, yeah, I, um, I, you know, I, the first time I became aware of this was actually when they brought their MUTC, um, application to, uh, um, to the LM, LMUTC meeting last Wednesday, um, you know, and it was a long meeting as they usually are, but it's all, it was all around aesthetic and compliance with, uh, MNCPBC's the Big Cities Town Center guidelines. Um, so the, the person that came in was a, um, uh, the person that came in was, uh, the, like, the architect, like the designer for the space, not actually the owner uh, for the business, so, um, you know, while I, I think certainly there's robust discussion on the aesthetics and design of the space, there wasn't anything, one, any discussion about the business itself, and I, I think this is the first time many of us were, um, had, had heard any information about the business, so I think it makes a lot of sense, uh, what Jimmy is saying, I think, um, you know, I, I knew on council, so I don't know how we handled this in the past, but, um, because this is the first time it's come before me. But I think it certainly would be helpful if the business owner is able to come in front and of council and also just kind of be aware of like the, you know, the requirements and, you know, code and everything, other things that are going to affect them being in the city, which I'm not a hundred percent sure they're prob- possibly aware of. Um, you know, and we have many, many businesses that, uh, you know, that serve alcohol and that are good neighbors, and I think we just want to, you know, want to make sure that, you know, whatever businesses in our downtown area, um, continue to, would do the same as well. Uh, that's all I, that's all I have, and I, I, I don't know if I have any additional useful feedback from LMUTC uh, for folks, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Jared, Valerie?
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, this seems to make sense to me to, to have them come before council, I haven't heard of them before, I don't know what their plans are, I know that, you know, I don't know if Ron, he had written back that he thought this was a good uh, group, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that, um, but it would be nice to hear a little bit more information about this business, um, and to wait um, on licensing, um, if, if they can, so, thank you.
Thank you, Valerie, Luke?
Yeah, I, I would agree with what Valerie just said, thank you.
So, um, like I said earlier in the meeting, um, just to be clear, uh, for it to be on record, um, the city does not decide on the liquor control licenses. Um, we could have a say, I mean, we, we could make a statement or even write a letter, but it's up to the liquor license, um, board to, to make their decision, so, um, just make sure that we're aware, you know, Jimmy's going to go out there and say, you know, the, the mayor and council will like, will like this, right? And the liquor license board, we still say like, okay, thank you for your comment and double forward to vote, so I don't want to make the expectations so high that we might stop it. But I do think, saying that, but I do think it's important for, um, for them to come to mayor and council, so we get to meet them, especially if they're going to be a business in our city, so Mr. Kamali or Alma, you might be able to help me a little bit with this, um. I, I think at least for, for me, we need to either create a checklist, if we already have one, where like they get any license from the city, the next stop is like come to see us, right, so we at least get to meet who are the news, uh, business in the city. And if we have questions about like, you know, you know, what type of business it is, and, and I don't mean like we're going to, you know, question them to run them out of the city, right? But questions like, you know, you know, what kind, you know, who they are, to also introduce them to the community, I think it definitely will be, it should be a standard, but for the most part, um, I don't believe with the, even with the new businesses that have opened that have liquor license, um, we have had them come in front of mayor and council, technically, they have actually come in for, for other purpose, and then they got their license, and part of the discussion has been there, but I'm thinking specifically, so Luke, do you recall that anybody having come into over for liquor license, so meeting us before this, or? Because I don't recall ever hearing, but I'm wondering if any chance.
No, I don't, I don't remember it.
Okay, this was just like in regards to like Jared's question, because he asked like if this has happened before, and I
Well, there is a history of this.
So, hold on, Jimmy, you know, I'm, I'll give you the floor right now, but I'm saying at least within the la- you know, the last few years, it hasn't happened, so we cannot like, you know, reference a memory that has happened, Jared, so. But, uh, Jimmy, you said in the past it has happened?
Well, there's definitely been the past where we've objected to a liquor license. Uh, the famous one was Bass Liquor, that the city went on record and, uh, even hired somebody and opposed the renewal of the liquor license, uh, there, there was, there was, I mean, uh, there was also a discussion on, obviously, about, you know, whether we should weigh in on the, on Chuck's Liquor, uh, in terms of new businesses, like, you know, there've been times when we've we've been asked, I think, to support it, and I don't know if it was the council was, but I know when Hattie Royal was doing work, but you know, people did it, um, the, the, you know, the Bass Liquor was the one where we weighed in and and actually we went to the Liquor Control Commission to oppose that.
Yeah, the, the, the one, um, for, uh, Chuck's, we did have a community event. Um, out of it, it was a, a hearing session, you know, from the community, but, uh, council didn't take one stand or another. Um, in, that's it, but I, I think that, yeah, it'd be great for you to go over, Jimmy, like you said, you're available to go and, and, um, and see if they move it, uh, the good.
It'd be my, it's virtual.
Well, okay, go virtually, Jimmy. Either way, even go, even, even you taking the time to be able to do this, and just, you know, that we would like to see if they could hold it for one more month, right? Um, you know, um, and let's figure out what they say, you know, it, it doesn't hurt for us to try in order for them to come in, and hopefully they, they, they see the value in their respect, in their respect, that in, in, and it, it gets that, the other thing that makes it feel a little bit better as well is the fact that you said they're so early in the, in the process that, um, it's not like we're going to hold the business from being open, um, for, um, do they meet once a month, Jimmy, the, this board, or often do they meet?
I, I think once a, a month, uh, I sent the, I sent you a link to the agenda, so you can look, but usually once a month.
Okay, perfect, so it's not like you're delaying them six months, um, i- if this is said, it's more like convince, you know, have a, and like let them know that meeting is, and, and our legislative meeting is when it is, um, the first, uh, week of, um, October, right, so that was, is coming up, so that we, um, it looks like if it's usually around this time with them coming to our meeting in October, will, they'll still be able to make the, the, the next meeting. All right, thank you so much, uh, council, anything else on this? Okay, um, hearing, uh, none. I'm moving on to item number thirteen, and right before thirteen, I'm just going to read the upcoming events. We have Public Safety Night, the September twenty-third from five We have Public Safety Night, the September twenty-third from five to nine PM at the Nature Center. Uh Indigenous People's Day is October ten, the city offices will be closed, Children's Sports Fest is October fifteen from ten to one PM. I learn about the native plant network, um, learn from the green team about the Maranian Native Plant Network and how can you participate at September twenty-nine? Um, and we need a time on that, and join the green team to help clean out and overgrow forest area in the south side of town does around thirty-seven hours. Luke? Luke, are you there?
Yep.
So, um, yeah, so, um, do, um, Mr. Kamali, can you ask, um. If we could put this out on communication and we go at the time, said the locations for them to meet. Um, definitely that will help because September twenty-nine um is literally around the corner. Okay, so Luke, if you could facilitate that information for the, for communication, so that would.
Yeah, I think, I think the green team already emailed the draft communication to Pink.
Okay, I'll look into it.
Okay, if they have it, I, they, they should shortly.
All right, perfect, thank you. I just wanna make sure that when we do the upcoming events, it's there, cause sometimes people pick it up from. Either the agenda, the calendar, so facilitate this stuff. All right, um, any other upcoming events we're missing on this list? Immediately, if not, like they could, they could wait until the legislative agenda. I think we, we got everything covered for right now and. And like I said, we had oh about a little over five hundred people showed up to our national, for Latino Heritage Month. So, um, it was very successful. Um, and we're very happy, so thank you, uh, everybody from the city that worked on this and the community members that volunteered, the explorers that volunteered. Um, it, it was um, a lot of gray, um, a lot of gray effort and also to the. To the various girl scouts who also show up trying to complete on their Hispanic Heritage uh Month batch. Thank you also for showing up. Um, and Senator Agostini was there, uh, Casamandere Tabaraz was also there, and from the county executive office, um, Allison was there. And the county executive did give us um a proclamation that's already been shared through social media. All right? So that was my brief on it. Okay, so moving on to item number thirteen, a German.
So moved.
Seconded.
Hey, you guys took a while to second that one. Is it properly seconded? Any discussion? Abstentions? Jared, start raising your hand. Um, objections? Uh, hearing none, this meeting has come to an end at ten and ten PM. Thank you guys so much. Thank you staff as well and. Um, thank you, committee members, for hanging out with us this late.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Kamali, thank you, staff, and everyone, Jared.
So, I'll give hi to everyone. Bye.